No, I don't.
Did Jimmy get it out? Did the current, current get it out for you?
Somebody said a little bit.
Hey Nelson.
No, I know you talk more than I do.
Everybody ready here?
Not to talk too close to it.
Right. Okay, looks like we're all settled in. Wonderful. Here we go, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this April 4 session of the Hoyok City Council to order. The clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan.
Here.
Graney.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
The city council.
We have an esteemed guest who I'm going to introduce in a moment, but before we do that, I would like to take a moment on behalf of the esteemed Hoyok City Council to have a moment of silence. As you know, the remains were recovered of US Army Corporal Jules Hodderman Jr., who 67 years ago, from this great city of Hoyok, trekked out to the Republic of Korea on behalf of the United States military to protect us as fellow citizens. Unfortunately, at the devastating battle of the Chozan reservoir in North Korea, this 19-year-old medic from the great city of Hoyok lost his life on December 2nd, 1950. To the great relief of many, many of his friends, his family, and a number of people who knew him, the United States military was ultimately able through, you know, the modern greatness of medical science to identify his remains and were able to return his body to the city of Hoyok, where as you know, he was laid to rest this past week. So on behalf of the entire city council, and certainly on behalf of a grateful nation, to our fellow Hoyoker, this 19-year-old heroic hero gave his life for our freedom, and I would be honored to give a moment of silence on his behalf. Thank you very much. It's certainly with great pleasure that I'm going to ask Counselor McGee if he would be so kind as to invite up our esteemed guest, who certainly needs no introduction in this room. Attorney Sarah Carroll has given us some extremely surprising news. Yes. And she has given us some extremely surprising news that it's unbelievable that there's possibly a better employment arrangement than working for the Hoyok City Council. This is an unheard of concept, but as surprising as that is, we have to recognize that, and at that time we'll take the same opportunity to recognize. Maybe Sarah can tell us a little bit about her new horizons, but we certainly would like, on my own behalf and those of the body, and I know Counselor McGee will say a few more words in a moment, certainly want to be very thankful to Sarah, her hard work, her many years of dedicated service already. It seems like just a flash of time has already gone by. She's very thoughtful, very conscientious, hardworking, smart, youthful attorney, and she's got a really bright future ahead of her. We had a late file order for this particular meeting that before we hand her a proclamation, it would be helpful, since we have the lawyer in the room, we have to make it official. And so a motion to suspend the rules to go to late file A would be in order.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Late file A, introduced by Counselor Todd McGee, that the city council presents Sarah Carroll with a proclamation for her dedicated service to the city of Hoyok. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And coincidentally, we have this wonderful proclamation, and it's at this point, I will hand it over to Counselor McGee for some kind words.
As we just told her tonight, she's like, what? It comes from Ryan. Ryan texted me over the weekend and said, what about Sarah Carroll? I'm like, oh, we forgot. So we always want to take care of our attorneys because they do a phenomenal job in, I mean, probably one of the best law departments around, especially because you're always short-staffed in the amount of work you do. But just a little brief history for Sarah here is, and I was going to say she came in as a lawyer. She's like, no, Todd, I came in as a paralegal. So she came in as a paralegal, went to law school, passed the bar, became an attorney. Most people at that point in time would have ran. She stayed. So she was hired under Lisa Ball, and then under Kara Kuna, worked under Kara Kuna, and then Carroll went off to Attorney General's office. Once again, she could have ran. She stayed. Now she's the acting solicitor, and she's doing all this great work for us. And then on finance on Thursday, she says, by the way, Tuesday will be my last meeting. And I said, what? I have a new job at the Department of Labor Relations. So you've been here since 2010, and like I said, many chances to leave, go off to greener pastures, but she stayed and supported us. And what most people don't know until I saw her for a Christmas party with my lovely suit on, the Santa suit, she said she has an hour, almost to an hour and a half drive, about an hour drive. So when she's leaving here early at night, 11, 12 o'clock at night from our meetings, she has an hour drive home. And then she comes back right away in the morning. I mean, that's dedication to the city of Hoyok that we always have to recognize. We thank you for everything you've done. It's greatly appreciated. So with that, and once again, thank you to Ryan for making sure we do it correctly, from the city of Hoyok, an official resolution that we recognize Attorney Sarah Carroll for the many years of dedicated service to the city of Hoyok, signed by the President, Kevin Jordan, attested to by the city clerk Brennan Mercer McGee on April 4th, 2017. Thank you for everything. And on a side note, before her speech, Thursday, Brennan's, Brennan's place?
Yes, Thursday.
Brennan's will be her official sending her off.
Todd, you buying?
At 4:30? 4:30.
Todd's buying.
And with that, hand it off.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate this, and thank you so much for your support and for your appreciation of all the work that I've done and of the Law Department in general. And I know I'm leaving the Law Department in good hands, and I'm grateful for this time that I've been able to help out the city of Hoyok, and I will always cherish this and remember my time here.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
We're going to do CDBG.
While Sarah's going around, I just wanted to chime in as the Chair of Ordinance, how invaluable Sarah has been, keeping that committee moving, running smoothly, and getting back to us so timely with some quite complex matters. So her assistance has been greatly appreciated. Thank you, Sarah.
Great. I'd say take the rest of the night off with pay, but unfortunately, we need you, you know? Sorry. Nothing I can do. I believe we also have an esteemed guest, but one of our department heads, I see Alicia Zeller's here from CDBG. We don't have a proclamation for you, Alicia, but we do have perhaps an appropriation of some CDBG funding if we'd like to take that out of order.
Motion to take item two out of order?
All right. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to go to item number two, which is...
You got to take out the table, Mr. President, right?
That's right. Suspend the rules to go to item number two, and also simultaneously, I believe, a motion to remove item number two from the table.
So moved.
Would be in order. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, let me read this for you. Item number two, the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom is referred in order that the community development block grants have been considered and recommend that it be adopted with the city council recommendations. This is signed off by counselors Bartley, McGivern, Tomlin, and Roman. Mr. Chairman, do you have a...
Make a motion to receive adopted committee report and support the DGR's allocation for CDBG.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded by Counselor Bartley to approve the committee recommendation that these CDBG appropriations, as well as the home fund, be approved as the committee has recommended to us. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley?
Counselor Leahy, did you want to say something?
Question. Maybe you know the answer to it, maybe Counselor Bartley, but I was reading in the newspaper last week that our president is now cutting these funds in the next fiscal budget. Do you guys hear anything about this?
I haven't heard that.
I can't tell, Mr. President.
Okay, you have some information on that?
This scares the heck out of me.
So just Mr. President, it's a point of order, and maybe Counselor McGivern can help. I think we have to take a separate roll call vote on the home funds.
Yes. Okay. Do we have that separately filed?
Do I need to do that? No, I can take, we can take one vote. Okay, we can just, so the motion that you, the motion you read is correct, sir.
Okay, great. Is the, and let's just make sure we have the home fund resolution with this.
I have it. I have it.
It's not elsewhere on the agenda, correct? So...
I, well, I don't know about that.
I'm sorry. Number five, six.
Okay, so...
Okay, just for, just for the purposes of just making sure we have all our ducks in order, there's also a communication six from Alicia Zeller. Maybe we should also suspend the rules and take that up at this time as well.
Suspend the rules.
Motion in seconded to suspend the rules to take up item number six as well at this time. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Let me just briefly read that for your edification. One is attached, please find FY17 allocation spreadsheet with recommendations of CDBG staff, CAC, Mayor Morse, and DGNR, DGNR recommendations. Please note the DGNR committee is recommending $20,000 for Hoyok Police Department Community Policing, with the condition that the funding be used solely for community policing patrols, to allow the council an opportunity to review the draft annual plan scheduled for release on March 15th. Please schedule this matter for council agenda of March 4th for a vote to recommend the FY17 funding, accept CDBG and home funds, and adopt the FY17 annual plan. A suggested resolution is attached. Sincerely yours, Alicia Zeller, Administrator. And just for everyone's knowledge, there is attached here the resolution to the city council relative to the home funds and the appropriation of the CDBG money. And there is a requirement for the clerk later to fill that out with the actual vote. So we have both, we have everything I believe is in order and before us.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we, so the committee met February 27th, and then at the March 7th full city council meeting, I did give the committee a report. We had a very robust hearing on the 27th. We were ably assisted by Alicia and her two assistants, who spent the whole evening, well, actually it was only two and a half hours. So it was actually lightning fast round, to be truthful, and they were, they came really prepared. The committee, we didn't agree on everything, but most of those were five-nothing, some were four-to-one, I think one might have been three-to-two. So the committee was pretty much in uniformity, and you can see how in general, we supported the mayor's recommendations, which is kind of the community, the Citizens Advisory Committee. Again, we got, I want to thank Counselor Mike Sullivan for his second year old participating on that, bringing us the feedback from that committee, which as a direct conduit is just invaluable to have a counselor on board who attends those CAC meetings. It's very helpful. So again, thanks to Mike for his diligence on that. All the committee members participated. We all had, it was again, a spirited, robust debate. To Counselor Leahy's point, if I may, Mr. President, yeah, there's some talk from the government, and of course, the department also recognized that in an email to me, I think it might have gone to the rest of the city council, that the, there's a possibility that CDBG funds might be slashed from, from this year's allocation. So the funds haven't been allocated, we know that. So we were hopeful that they would be allocated for the 1st of July, but that's, that's a decision by the president and the Congress, of course. And I, my sense is, in hearing from Congressman Neal, spoken this many, many times, just how valuable the CDBG is to the, to his district and to the country as a whole. I kind of find it hard to believe that CDBG would, wouldn't survive budget cuts, but that's speculation. So with that, I'm, there's really not too many things to point out. A lot of these things are standard. I think one of the things that Counselor Tomlin really advocated for was Medal of Honor Monument. You didn't see so much support from other agencies, but that's something we really want to, really want to see. I think Counselor Roman really got behind some of the park and rec department improvements. Counselor McGivern really got behind and again, supported robustly the, that's the third time I use that, I won't use that again, sorry. He really got behind the community policing. I just, you know, did my part wherever it is. So there was, there was that. So I'll be happy to answer any, any questions that the other council members who weren't able to attend have at this time. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Just, I'll just stay, not that I'm encouraging it, but just under the rules, you are allowed to make amendments if one wanted to. Okay, all right. Not hearing any of those. If there is no further discussion, then we will take this to a vote.
Can I just make one other point, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
If I would. You'll see on, on the second page under infrastructure, and this is, you know, we all know how the game is played here, right? Do we all know how this works? Because we're just, we're recommending, that's all we're doing. We're recommending to the mayor. He controls the whole enchilada. Okay, so we all get this, right? But you'll see under infrastructure, OCD approved it, Citizens Advisory Committee blanked it, and the mayor put in $114,000 for a parking lot at 278 Pine Street. So I want this, I want this known, I'm pulling this out, I want this known to the public, that we in that committee voted five-nothing to remove those. Now, we don't agree on, we disagreed on a lot of stuff that night, and every counselor who was there will, will say that. But we agreed unanimously to pull all those funds to the penny out of that amount. And so where is 278 Pine Street? Well, it's, it's at the corner of Hampshire and Pine, and right now there is a five-story brick building that's fenced off, but it's half of it's been demoed. The demo started, I think, last week. It's about half demolished. Ostensibly, it's to be for, it's for a, you know, parking for the senior center. Well, to walk from, if that parking lot was established, seniors would have to walk an entire city block from that to get to the senior center. I don't think so, Mr. President. I don't think it's happening. I don't understand what, what the rationale is for $114,000 for a parking lot. Which, by the way, Mr. President, the irony, the ironies of all this is we don't have to go back to a few years ago about a parking lot, and how we had zero support from Room 1 on said parking lot for the YMCA. How about none who got behind it? And several councils were here, were against it. But fortunately, you know, the good guys prevailed. Ultimately, we always prevail, Mr. President. The good guys always prevail. And that, that was a win for the good guys. But here's the irony. Now we're going to have $114,000 in federal money for a parking lot. So hopefully the mayor, again, who pulls the trigger on all this, will sort of hear us and say, we're allocating these monies for parks in wards one and two, by the way, some sidewalks, and some other really important things that you can see how it's allocated, again, in the lower wards. Instead of having a parking lot where it's not needed, a country mile away from the senior center, and a country mile away from West Derryhurst. So with that, Mr. President, I'm done. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. If I could just go through either you or Mr. Bartley, can, let me just ask you a question. Can, can monies be shifted from line items within the topic, such as infrastructure?
Yes. You have to state, there's certain percentages, you have to keep them inside those different earmarks. So like, infrastructure and public service to public service or infrastructure. Yeah, but those could be, you can make recommendation amendments.
No, that's supposed to be Room 1. Can they move money?
Oh, yeah. He's got the magic wand. At the end of the day, as Counselor Bartley was alluding to, he, he makes, you know, the final decision.
This committee, who worked very diligently and hard, who recommended, you know, $100,000 for sidewalks, which I'm totally, totally in favor of, that could actually be moved over to the parking lot.
It could.
Yes.
Well, Counselor, what happened last year, Counselor Sullivan got behind demo work, and the mayor, what he did in his wisdom, he moved it for a park across Dwight Street.
Pedestrian Plaza.
The pedestrian plaza. That's, you'll see that elsewhere on the agenda, by the way. So...
Thank you.
You can do it.
Just curious. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Counsel Lisi?
Thank you. I think that the committee made a really wise decision to cut the funding for the parking lot. I think that, you know, sidewalks and infrastructure improvements that the general public would be able to enjoy would probably be a better use. The one thing I do want to point out though, since we took a little trip down memory lane, is that I don't think when we're in this room talking about the parking lot for the YMCA, that anybody was against the parking lot so much as it was against a zone change. And we actually crafted an entire new special permit process in order to create a parking lot without a zone change having the effect that it would on the neighborhood there. lot without a zone change having the effect that it would on the neighborhood there. So I just want to, for the record, make sure that we remember that there wasn't such a thing as good guys and bad guys in the situation there. It was just how quickly we were going to get the parking lot and what impact that would make on the community, the residents there.
Counselor Valentin.
And I was going to voice something along the lines of Counselor Lisi, so I won't repeat that. But I do think that it's, that we should be aware of productive and non-productive language of good guys prevailing or not prevailing, because in reality, as one of the bad guys that didn't vote in the manner that some wanted us to vote at that first stab on the subject, you know, I actually need to say that I take offense to language as of good guys prevailing or not when it was around constituent feedback. So I'm not going to accept that as feedback or verbiage that pertains to us doing our job as counselors and listening to who we need to listen to. Thank you. For the record as well.
Counselor Graney?
As sometimes a good guy and sometimes a bad guy, could we move the question, please?
Is that a good guy or a bad guy idea?
That's a good guy.
All right. Counselor McGivern?
I'd just like to take my stab at rewriting history here, if I could. What was said earlier about President Trump is even before President Trump is important, and we need to reach our congressmen, and we need to reach our delegates on the state level, to tell them the importance of this money, this type of money for a community like Hoyoke, whether you're Lowell, Lawrence, Springfield, even Chicopee. These dollars are so valuable to finance budgets that are in deep dire straits with financing. And the federal government used to give us a lot more, not just in block grant money, but a lot more in other allocations to help us pay for those day-to-day services that are so needed. You know, we have a great government that can save the world. How about, how about urban America? How about saving America first? And we need to get that message to them, that you can't totally cut out the dollars that we need and spend so well, as we can see in these recommendations.
I think the numbers used to be over 2 million, right, Joe?
No.
Yeah. And so now we're dividing up a million? Not quite?
Yeah. The home funds were close to a million and a half when they started.
So, so these used to be big, and of course, what a buck was worth 20 years ago. So now you're actually inflation plus smaller. So it is, you definitely see an impact here. And these, especially for a lot of these public service programs, they really hang on these dollars, you know. All right, any other thoughts other than that, councilors? Okay, so I think we're ready to do some voting? All right, here we go. So the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the home fund resolution, as well as the committee recommendation in favor of the home fund resolution, but also in favor of the CDBG allocation. Any questions? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting item number six resolution, as well as the committee recommendation at item number two. Clerk will call the roll, please.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you've approved the CDBG allocations for this year, as well as the home fund resolution. So that's items two and six. Alicia, we wish you well.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work and the review that went into the proposals. And to invite you all, you should have received written invitations by this point, but I want to invite you all, as well as the general community, to a community development celebration that we're going to be having on Wednesday, April 19th, from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. here in City Hall Auditorium. We have some wonderful announcements. It's an opportunity to meet and greet the folks, both our beneficiaries and agencies that benefit from these programs that you vote on year after year, and I'm hoping that everyone can attend. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot, Alicia. Appreciate your hard work. All right. So we have an item marked number one, which is, as we know from our last meeting, is an item laid on the table. That's the veto of an ordinance.
On the table.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to remove item number one from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Is there a motion?
Move to override?
Motion's been made. Is there a second to override the veto? Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the override, and no vote is to deny the override.
LeBron Martinez?
No.
Lisi?
No.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Motion again, Mr. President?
To override the veto, pass the law. Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
Ten yeas, five nays.
By your vote, you have overridden the mayor's veto, and that is now law. Item number three is on the table. This is a petition of Jeanette Vega. And I believe Counselor Lopez, you were gracious enough to, do you have some information? Should we take this off the table or leave it for now?
No, we should take it off the table.
Motion on the table.
Motion to remove item number three off the table. Oh, is it? Beautiful. Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Lopez in a minute here for his hard work on this, to help this citizen. Motion on the floor is to remove item number three from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Petition of Jeanette Vega for a street vendor license for a mobile food truck. And let's see what we've got here. So it would appear, so she went to the DPW, and she would like to have it located on Main Street, in the road, at Springdale Park, North Side, near the Spray Park area. A food truck to be parked on Main Street seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And she does provide an insurance binder, and it's now here before the Hoyoke City Council for our approval or nonapproval. So is there a motion, at least to start the conversation?
I would like to make a motion to adopt.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. So motion's been made and seconded to adopt and to approve her license application, and we'd have to put some sort of time limit, durational, and we can also discuss the, how many days a week and those hours. But as we know under the ordinance, she's seeking a license greater than 30 days, requires council permission for the city to issue her a license to put her food truck on the street, on Main Street, near the Spray Park, seven days a week, eight to eight. So that's something. So just one, do you have a question or a comment?
No, I have a comment.
Comment, okay. So we'll get back to you, Counselor Graney. Counselor Lopez, clue us in from your perspective. I know I was on some emails, and I know you were helping her to meander the process, and so we understand the lady's request.
Well, if I may, this is something new for the City Council. I am very familiar with the process, so I, that's why I jumped in to help her.
And we thank you for that.
So she went to the DPW, she also obtained a liability naming the city. So she did everything, and now it's up to the City Council to either approve it or deny it, or with conditions, or whatever we want to do.
Okay, great. Counselor McGivern?
Does she have a certificate from the Board of Health?
She's waiting for this one in order to go there and get the other one, get the BOHs.
Is this a new truck that she's bought, or she's had this for?
She bought it and renovated, and I saw some pictures. It's real nice. Let me give you some background, how this works. So she filed a petition with the City Council. She also has to get a permit from the state, which is in process. Then she has to go to the DPW, have the location, and have liability insurance naming the city, just to make sure that we're covered. $500,000. I think she obtained one for $1 million. And she's asking to be there seven days a week, eight to eight. And the DPW gave up permit, but I think the City Council has the final say, in my opinion. But I mean, it's.
I agree with that. Counselor Graney?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to this issue. There is a restaurant that is directly across from, you know, that Springdale, that park right there now that exists. It's open five days a week, from 8:00 in the morning till approximately 2:00 in the afternoon. I mean, is this going to affect that business? And do we know that, you know, I don't object to the concept, but I kind of object to the location. Is this going to harm that business that's been a longstanding Hoyoke business, that's been there, that is in the food business? That's what their business is. So that concerns me. So at this point, I cannot support this. I'm going to have to vote against it.
So I couldn't have a truck of Yuzu's and pull up in front of Gary Rome Hyundai, and sell them off the back, and sell motor vehicles off the back of a truck? Okay.
You could. Sure you could, because you're the council president.
At least in January, that'll be my new business. I'm sorry, Counselor Roman, were you the one? I thought I heard a voice.
So I want to speak in favor of this motion. I think that, again, in speaking to the concerns of my colleagues, that anytime you add more lunch and business, especially mobile food trucks, Springfield does it no better in the North End. There's tons of restaurants, and they have about anywhere from five to 10 mobile food trucks at any given time. It actually adds to the ambiance and also the foot traffic of individuals looking for lunchtime options. So I think that this will be an added benefit to the current business across the street. If you know you can come and there's a mobile food truck, I would actually think that we, similarly to Springfield, would love to regulate more mobile food trucks and welcome them into the city. I think it's a good thing for us here. I think it'd be a great thing. And I think it'll add to definitely that dynamic for individuals in the park, and I definitely think it'll be a plus for the business. So I'm actually going to be voting in favor. I thank my colleague, Counselor Lopez, for doing all this work, and I will gladly support this business. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I just have a question. What is the time period that the license is being sought for?
It has no, she offers no duration. That's why I think we're going to need to give one. I would assume she picked the Spray Park because of children are there, maybe, and summer months, maybe.
Memorial Day to Labor Day. Through the president to Counselor Lopez, would you have a recommendation in that regard?
Well, if I may, I know that she's getting a license from the state. The state will give her a license for a year, but that doesn't mean that the City Council has to do that. I don't want to speak for her. I asked her to put a time, and I don't see one, so I, it's up to the City Council. I would say, you know, November 1st or something like that, but I'm not sure if that would be the date that we want to use. And also, I just want to speak, I know the Springdale Luncheon Act, I mean, I've been there for years, great folks, Becky with her staff. I think having this trailer there, this truck, it's going to be Spanish food. I don't think the competition will be that. Knowing the neighborhood, knowing Becky and her restaurant, and I mean, I go there, and I wouldn't hurt her. I mean, that's only my opinion, but I mean, I don't think it's going to be, it's going to make a big difference, in my opinion.
Is she leaving the truck there overnight or driving it home?
No.
Okay, so she's going to pull up at eight, leave at eight, seven days a week? Okay. Well, I mean, I think certainly, I mean, my recommendation to the council is we would put a duration on this, for sure.
I'll make a motion, Mr. President, that it be from May 1st to September 30th. Is that fair?
Can I make an amendment to that?
Okay, what did you?
I didn't get a second for it.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
We don't have a second yet.
Trying to be a good guy.
I'll second it.
Five, one to 9:30 is the initial proposal. Okay, so that received, May 1st to 9:30 received a second. Counselor Valentin, did you have some thoughts?
I would just make an amendment, just thinking of, you know, the winter and such, and I think May 1st is a late start. So I would actually propose March 1st to November 1st.
Well, we're already in April.
No, but.
She's going to have to come back next year.
Okay, so that was my question. This is just for.
2017.
Okay, then never mind.
Okay, all right. All right. And the next thing is, I just want to entertain for the body, our thoughts on seven days a week, our thoughts on 8:00 a.m. on a Sunday, Saturday morning, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 at night? Is that, we feel comfortable with those hours?
Yes.
Seven days a week? Okay, all right.
Can I?
Yes, Gladys.
Yeah, I think the hours will be good, because they do have a lot of games that happens there, and they probably, that's where they will make the best, you know, profits out of those games happening, so.
Okay. And the other thing is, just not to say this will, but again, I just try to think out of the box on this, because I have no problem with this, but is, if I'm truck number two or truck number three, and, you know, I got the ice cream truck, I go behind her truck, and now I've got the next one, which is the, you know, the sandwich truck, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering, at certain spots around town, we're going to have to just give this some thought, that's all. Because, you know, I think if the word gets out there that you could camp out all day in a location, but we'll just play it by ear, right? We'll just see how it goes for the first year, how it works and whatnot. And at least there, you have plenty of spot, I guess people will park, right, pull up in front of her truck, or it's people walking by into the park, so that should be okay. Yes, Counselor Roman?
I completely agree with you, and I'd like to actually see, and I'm going to reach out to my colleagues in Springfield, they're actually going through an exhaustive regulation process through like ordinances of regulating food trucks and hours and fees and so on and so forth. So I think that that's something that this body should explore as well. I think as we're entering into this new realm of, you know, more food trucks that are going to be stationed more permanently, similar to Springfield in the North End, I think it's a good conversation. So I agree with you.
Yep. The other thing I would ask that we put in as a condition is no music off the truck. So you can't, you know, there should be, I think we should put a condition that says no, you know, I don't know about you, but I umpire baseball, and they come into the park, and it's, and they got the carnival music, and they're going for like an hour. And the people find that extremely annoying, so I don't know if we have. I've been trying to concentrate, you know, I got, I got the strike zone here. I'm trying to do a good job, and, you know, I got the carnival music going in my ear, but.
Well, isn't, I mean, there's already an ordinance regarding, like.
They don't, but these mobile trucks are not following them, then, because they're riding around through the neighborhoods.
But that's an enforcement issue. I mean, we already have an ordinance regarding noise levels, but.
Then a condition would not make, I don't think would be a problem. That would be just saying.
Well, I mean, setting a final issue of no music, I mean, it's.
Well, I don't mind if she's listening to the radio. What I'm talking about is blaring it at, you know, so the whole neighborhood, they're, it's like an attraction thing, you know?
Loudspeaker?
Yeah.
Are you balking at this ordinance? Are you balking at?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no. I don't know, I just think that makes sense, but that's just me. Maybe I overanalyze these things.
I mean, you can amend it to say, just remind the applicant that the city's noise ordinances need to be adhered to. I mean, something as simple as that, Kevin, Mr. President.
All right. You'll mention that de estat, all right?
Seems less punitive than, don't you dare play your music.
Yeah, and if it's going to be music, at least play something good. I don't want to hear, you know, circus music for the whole afternoon.
Take me out to a ballgame.
Yeah, take me out to the ballgame.
Make sure it's salsa.
Salsa, yeah.
Since it's Puerto Rican food. There you go.
Hey, if you say that's the standard, okay, but I'm just saying, whatever, whatever, it's got to be something decent.
I'm a motion.
All right. Here we go. So the motion on the floor was an amendment made and seconded by Counselor Bartley and, I believe, Roman. May 1st to September 30th is the amendment that there'll be, that'll be the duration of this license. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. On adoption of the license for Monday to Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., from May 1st to September 30th, 2017. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All so, I'm going to take a roll call vote on that, just in case, because it is a license. I'm going to say that should be by roll call vote. So clerk will call the roll, please.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy? Thirteen yeas, two nays.
By your vote, you have approved the license for Ms. Vega. I'm just writing on here the conditions. Public comment. We had nobody sign up for public comment. Public comment. We had nobody sign up for public comment for this week, so we move on. Communications. First up, item number four. Item number four is a communication from our city clerk, Brenna Murphy McGee. It's the minutes of March 21st, 2017.
Motion to receive?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and approve our minutes of March 21st. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number five is a communication from Lori Belanger, Chief Procurement Officer. Financial transfer for $4,000 to the Chief Procurement Officer's salary line. Wanna send this to Finance?
Does she even refer to Finance?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to Finance. Any discussion?
Can you, um, read the basics of it?
She's looking for a pay raise.
Is it a pay raise, or is what she was hired at? Cause that's what I understand from the letter.
It's not what we appropriated. That's what the mayor gave, offered her. And those are frequently two different things.
Sure, but, I mean, don't we hire people with some, some sort of like, a contract or negotiation?
Subject to appropriation. Mayor could offer somebody a million dollars. We don't give it to them. They don't get it. Checks and balance. That's what we do here.
I still, I, I understand this is going to committee, but I still feel like, um, we, we cut the budget line item in the following year's budget, and she was already hired. So, she was hired at a particular rate.
Yep.
And then we, we cut her salary.
Yep.
The next year.
Yes, we did.
So, that's a little bit different than, you know, being.
We did that how long ago? That was in June of 2016, right?
Almost a year ago. And there's been this...
We're just hearing about it now?
Wasn't it?
It's not exactly a right issue.
Wasn't there, um, an order pending in committee for some time, and that's why it's being resurfaced? Because no action has been taken?
I don't know. Somebody asked a transfer? I guess, I think a transfer just came in tonight, right?
There is a transfer tonight for Chief Procurement Officer. Um, I'm assuming that would, will be going to committee as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send that to Finance, and the committee will expeditiously, as it does all its work. We'll take it and consider what she has to say, and consider what the mayor feels people should be paid, and, and then, um, you know, we'll think about it, and if ten people say yes, then...
Yeah, I get it. I understand, I understand the process. I'm just, um, trying to understand the, I guess, the difference of opinion here. I'm trying to get at the legal requirements.
I, I believe the issue.
Oh, read the letter. Would you, just read, read, we'd read the whole thing. Just stay, just read it. I mean, what's, what are we doing?
It's, it's, she goes in.
We're gonna debate in committee.
This is a treatise. I'm not, I would prefer not to read two, two pages of ten point five on why someone needs a raise, or feels they need a raise. Say it in committee. Yes, Mr. McGee?
Just to answer Council Lisi's question, the, the position itself will be part of the salary ordinance study that is in the ordinance committee, waiting a final, right, vote.
For how many years now?
I think that's longer than Ms. Belanger's been our procurement officer.
Very good. And, uh, alright.
Can I, can I just say something?
Of course.
Please. Um, I think we've been witnessing for the last several years since, oh my God, the council, uh, seat, the amount of people that were losing a turnover of individuals who are worthwhile. Um, I know Ms. Belanger came before sometime and shared her additional development that she, you know, have done in order to, uh, do a better work, job that that she's been currently doing. She's been doing an excellent job in here. You know, I know that this has to go to committee, but we're, we're questioning a raise that, to me, we've, we were not able to fill certain positions here that took us almost two years to fill. We have a, a great person doing a great job, and we're actually fighting over four hun, $4,000, which I know it's a, it's a, it's a big deal for some of us, which it should be, but my point is that, you know, just like we're losing anyone else, we lose another person within the city that is doing a great job for $4,000. It's gonna cost us more than that to go and do the whole hiring process again. I just, you know, sharing my personal opinion about that, and I think we need to start thinking about these are kinda steps that we're taking when it comes to people who deserve that type of payment. Thank you.
It's supply and demand. That's, that's the beauty of our system. If you don't like what's being supplied, you don't give the demand. And I would say, as my best recollection is, I think she's getting the same pay as the person that was there before, who was there for, I don't know how many years, but, uh, Council President, did you have anything else you wanted to shed light on?
Yeah, just a couple of quick thoughts. I mean, I, I guess, if we set the precedent of department heads sending city councils letters, letters that are asking for raises, and we started doing it, that would be a problem. I will also point out that there are many lifelong residents within the city of Hoyok that are department heads, um, that, me, for instance, leaving the health department over seven years ago, I was making what the purchasing director's making now, which means Brian's been making that for seven years, and he, and I was making that four years before that. So, for 11, 11, 12, 13, 14 years, the board of health director, who's required to have a bachelor's of science degree, required to be a registered seren, sedentarian, required to be a certified pool operator, a food inspector, restaurant inspector, soil evaluator, I could go on and on with the licenses and the requirements that are required for a board of health director, and he's making $58,644 and has been for over 15 years. So, I mean, we also have no raises for the assessor's office. I mean, we could go on and on about department heads that are underpaid. There's no doubt about it. It is happening. Unfortunately, do we handpick which, who gets what and when they get it? I mean, you, you know, if the mayor's making promises when the finances may not be there, that's an issue. Um, and it, there, there was questions about this certain appointment, and it's not, it's, again, it's not about the person, but the, the, the public service , uh, uh, committee never got the resume, you know, that, that person that's been appointed that position was working in that office long before there was any sort of appointments, a resignation was sent, a resignation was sent to her previous employer, and that person was working for the city of Hoyok before we even knew that was happening. So, I mean, I, I just think we have to be very careful about, you know, getting heartfelt letters about, about, uh, the finances. I mean, you know, uh, many department heads in the city of Hoyok need to be making more.
Council McGivern?
Just to set the record straight, the, Mr. Martins, who did hold that position for the last 10 years of his office, of 30-something years in that office, never received a raise cause he was at max. And I think that's part of what Council President's saying.
Yeah.
And part of what we said about five years ago, when we asked for the salary study. The, the mayor did not hire her at max. This $4,000 has to fit within the current ordinance step range, or we couldn't do it without changing the ordinance. And, and the whole purpose of the salary study range was to make our salary ranges fair, competitive, and comparative to other communities. That's what's sitting in the ordinance committee.
Yeah. Right, and, well, the other issue is, when you seen the maxes that came through that are in the ordinance committee.
But it still takes an appropriation, even if we pass those ordinances.
Yeah, well, the way they, well, we at least have a new ordinance in place that allows you not to do the mid-year changes. It's like, you know, cutting the fire chief's salary to a 3%, and then the mayor the next day puts it back all the way up to the max. It's, it's things like that. Um, you know, we can reevaluate. I've looked for some new caps. I've yet to see the new caps that have come in, but some of these salaries that are being asked for max pay is something the city can't afford. I mean, some of them are north of $100,000. I mean, I mean, just some, some of these positions, you know, the finances of the city are such, I think, as we're about to see later tonight. I mean, we're out of free cash. We don't, we don't even have enough free cash to fund the transfers that are up here tonight. So, there's gonna be requests to take money out of stabilization fund. So, you know, the reality is, is some people just have to make a, a professional decision if you wanna work here or not. That's, that's the bottom line, you know? This is what the job pays. If you don't wanna work for that pay, go elsewhere. It's, it's a free country. That's unfortunately, some of the decisions that people have to, to make. I mean, you're not gonna get rich working for the city of Hoyok. That's just the way it is.
Not, and...
Of course.
Um, and, and I, I hear what you're saying, and I hear, you know, the, the business model and all that, but I, I think, you know, I, I just need to say that I'm in my second term here, and we, we have had many, many department heads, um, here to come in and, you know, during the budget process, because we file orders and we ask them to come in. And, um, you know, I, I need to say that it's, it's been really, and I'm not even talking about this situation. I'm just saying this on the record, out loud, um, speaking for myself, and hoping that maybe folks can, can listen to what I have to say for a minute here. It's, one part is that the salaries are not great, which, you know, our, our hands are tied many, many times for that. But the other part is the treatment that a lot of department heads get from this body. And I've, I've witnessed it, and I, I've been uncomfortable about it, because these are folks that, many of them live in the city, they're taxpayers here, they're, you know, they, they give from their time to do other things that are not related to their paid jobs. And again, I'm, I'm not talking about the situation we're, we're discussing right now. I'm just saying in general. And, um, I guess maybe the, the, the learning lesson, the, the teachable moment here is that if we don't have much option in terms of how we can go or where we can go with money, then maybe we can all make it a point to make sure that we are valuing our department heads. Because I have seen it many, many times here, and I'm sure that there are people in this room that can agree with me, that, um, they don't, you know, they, they don't get appreciated by this body many times, and I need to say that out loud. And, you know, and sometimes it applies to ourselves, you know? We don't, I, I know for sure I'm not appreciated by people in this body, and that's okay. I can deal with it. I made the decision to run for office. And you can make faces while I'm talking, you can talk on the side. That's perfectly fine. But I'm talking about, let's respect our department heads, because they have a hard job to do, and they're not doing it for a lot of money. So, whatever we can be a part of in helping the situation, I think we should look at as a group. Thank you.
Yep. I, I will say, um, just on the defense of the city council, I, I don't entirely disagree with what you're saying. Um, I think we can always, uh, be sensitive to, to how we treat people. Um, historically, though, let me tell you, it's been much, much easier, uh, I think, on department heads than I used to see it before, if that's any consolation. Okay. Um, I, I haven't seen any real heavy, heavy gloves being laid on anybody around here, um, in terms of verbal, uh, as far as I can tell. Um, but nevertheless, there's always room for improvement. Uh, but I will, I will say that, um, I think on balance, you know, the mayor can sit over there on the other side of City Hall and play Santa Claus and give out the money, and then it's, well, you know, I literally had him say this to me. Well, I put it in there. If you don't want it, you go ahead and cut it. So, that means what? We're the bad guy, right? So, we have to be the guy that takes the, takes the, takes, takes the candy out of this, out of the stocking, and, and we're, and we're portrayed to be the bad guy. So, if, you know, that's the way, yeah, but like as Counsel Bartley said, we're the good guys. But the, the point, the point of the matter is, is, you know, we exercise the fiscal discipline, and I'm very transparent. I'm very real with people. You call me up, I'll tell you just like it is. I see Lori sitting right over there. I'll say whatever it is right to her face. She knows that's how I operate, and she, she, I would expect her to say the same thing to me. Um, you know, I'm real with people, and I'll say that I'm not gonna sit here and say, oh, great, you know, we're loaded with money, and let me get, let me make a 10. You know, I mean, if you really went and said to everybody, just give you more money, you know, if we could only give you more. Unfortunately, we don't, we really don't have it, with rare exceptions, but go ahead, Council Grani.
Just a suggestion, Mr. President. Could we send this to the Finance Committee for debate?
Well, that was the motion. Great.
It was the motion. I realize that was the motion.
Great. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Seven. We already took care of six. From Doctors Reich. Doctors Reich has a memo to us, and it's regarding the findings of the Hoyok Public School Central Office Task Force. And he comes up with some ideas and suggestions, and I wanna first off, give a shout out to Counselor McGee, who, uh, was on the committee and really did a lot of work on the Central Office Task Force with a number of other, uh, folks. Um...
And Counsel Lisi?
Oh, of course, yes, and Counsel Lisi, excuse me, uh, was also on that as well. And, uh, I believe, what's it, uh, school committee member Brunel? Who, who were the other reps out?
Irene Feliciano.
Okay.
Irene Feliciano.
Oh, uh, Irene Fil- Fil- Sims, okay.
Anthony Soto, not Ari Anthony Soto.
Right, the, the finance gentleman. Okay, very good.
Doctors Reich, and then a couple of members like, uh, Whitney.
Okay, very good. So, among other things, I'll just read the second, uh, paragraph, cause it's a four paragraph document. He says, "I commend the task force for conducting multiple site visits, reviewing building condition reports, conducting cost analyses on a multiple scenarios, and examining a myriad of possibilities for the offices now housed at 57 Suffolk Street. In the end, the task force recommended unanimously that the school department remain at 57 Suffolk Street, consolidate from four floors to two. We have a proposal from Appleton that would reduce our rent costs to $150,944 if we consolidated, which is approximately half of our current. I fully support this recommendation as it is most sensible and fiscally responsible decision, given the city and schools do not currently own space that could accommodate the needs. It's my recommendation to the council, this move be effective July 1, 2017." So, that's the report. Do we wanna send that to Finance, Mr. Chairman? Motion on the floor is to send item number seven to committee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number eight.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take up item 21A along with item eight, please?
Okay. Alright, thank you. So, motion to suspend the rules to take up item number eight and item number 21A. Suspend the rules to take them up both now and take them up as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 21A is the following. "The committee on ordinance to whom is referred a zone change application for Hoyok Retail LLC for 1504 North Hampton Street from R2 to Highway Business have considered the same. Recommend that the order be given, leave to withdraw without prejudice." Counselors Bacon, Jordane, Bartley, and Lopez. And then, communication number eight states, "A letter from Peter LaPointe, who's the vice president of Hoyok Retail LLC, who was seeking the zone change request. He states, 'Dear Mrs. McGee, we request that the application for zone change for the above referenced property be withdrawn from consideration at this time. Sincerely, Peter LaPointe.'" Do we have a motion?
A motion to receive and adopt the committee report. That communication was received by the committee.
Yep.
And that was the action recommended.
Very good. Okay, so, uh, the applicant has requested that we give his application a withdrawal. Just for the record, I'll put that inside the, uh, well, actually, I'll leave him separate, cause I see inside the packet there is that letter as well.
And so, it would be withdrawn without prejudice.
Yep. So, the motion has been made and seconded, uh, to give the item leave to withdraw without prejudice, uh, and also to receive communication number eight. Any discussion? Hearing none. The Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to give the zone change, leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
By your vote, you, thank you very much. By your vote, you have given item number 21A, um, leave.
Leave to withdraw.
Leave to withdraw without prejudice. Thank you.
Nine through 10, um, sorry, nine, 10, 11 as a package, please. Suspend the necessary rules.
Motion to made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up items nine through 11 as a package. Uh, under discussion of that, Counsel Sullivan?
I, I'd just like to, uh, for the record, add, uh, item 10. Uh, is this the appropriate time?
Sure, so, uh, just a motion. You're gonna make a discussion on this?
Add 10, yeah.
Okay. So, all in favor suspending the rules to take up nine through 11 as a package? All in favor?
Aye.
Sure, so, uh, just a motion. You're going to make a discussion on this?
Add 10, yeah.
Okay. So all in favor suspending the rules to take up nine through 11 as a package? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion to receive?
Receive.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second motion is made and seconded to receive nine through 11. Under discussion, Counselor Sullivan.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at, uh, the HRA minutes, um, but, uh, these, I believe, were executive session minutes. To be getting these a year and a half later, um, just seems to me extremely excessive. And also having, um, uh, looked at what was discussed in executive session, I, I don't feel, uh, I, I feel that's an over, overuse of the privilege, that a lot of this stuff should have been discussed in public and in a public forum, not in executive session. And I, I just really think that the time gap, uh, is very, very excessive.
True.
File an order.
Mr. President?
I'll go with you.
And I just want to, just for the benefit of everybody at home, because I know we have a printed agenda in front of us, but I just want to be, uh, extra careful to say, item number nine is the Park and Rec Commission Minutes of February 28th, 2017. Item number 10 is the HRA Minutes of July 1st, August 19th, December 16th, 2015, March 3rd, 2016, and March 31st, 2016. And item number 11 is the DPW Sewer Commission and Stormwater Authority Minutes of February 27th, 2017. Continuing under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
I just wanted to point out, Mr. President, that we, we had some discussion here a while ago, as to whether a, a city counselor, uh, not a member of a Hoyok Commission, could participate in executive session. And there was some discussion in the DGR Committee, well, not really sure. Uh, well, let me, let me just point out that when I read those minutes, I certainly saw the name of a city counselor in executive session in a board in which that city counselor is not a member. So, now, whether that's pro forma, whether that's an exception, hard to say. I, I just, I just want to point that out. The other thing I want to point out, Mr. President, since we're under discussion here, uh, I'm very, very pleased and impressed with the, uh, more detailed minutes that coming out of the Board of Public Works and the Sewer Commission and all that, as opposed to, um, uh, let's see, the commission met, uh, we, there's no, nothing, we met and then we adjourned. And that, that was about the extent of the minutes under prior regime. So I'm very impressed now that we actually have some content, uh, to read in these minutes. So, um, I just want to compliment the, uh, new DPW Superintendent and his Board of Commissioners for doing that. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Counselor Sullivan's comments, um, I, I think part of the timely issue is that when these boards, this board is the Redevelopment Authority, uh, but similar to HEADC, and note that the Economic Development Staff are the people that do these minutes and, and prepare them, not just for, uh, for the boards, but for, for the public and for, for, for us, um, are, are probably the most timely people, or the most, you know, most protective group of allowing executive session minutes to be taken, voted upon and released. What other executives' accession minutes do we get? Now, most of the other committees, their executive session is personnel issues, but sometimes it is real estate. And we've had that problem with the gas and electric before, where we never see their executive session minutes. I, one of the problems with executive session minutes is, when the bodies meet, there might be two or three items on the executive, on the agenda for executive session. Each of them probably will be having to do with real estate transactions, proposals, you know, groups, uh, development groups that the bodies are working with. And until all of those items are, are, come to their fruition, you cannot release the executive session minutes, because that's the, that the whole purpose of the city setting up HEADC and Redevelopment Authority is to allow them to do things that the mayor shouldn't be doing, and that the city council cannot participate in. Not as, and I'm not talking about as a watchdog or a fiscal watchdog, but as the, the actual negotiations of real estate. Um, and, and I, I think there might be a way to, to, to answer Counselor Sullivan's question if we somehow separated each item and had minutes for each item, and, you know, when, when they are in executive session. But that's, that's just a, a thought. To, uh, I'm the unnamed city counselor in the minutes that are before us this evening. Um, I participated in that meeting, I'm always a city counselor, well, for now anyways. I participated in that meeting as a member of HEADC, and I was asked, as a treasurer of HEADC, I was asked to represent HEADC in a negotiation of a loan that would allow, at the time, the Parson Papers, um, part of the Aegis, uh, Parson Papers Development Project to go forward. And it was my job, along with, uh, Mr. Murphy, who at the last minute could not make that meeting, to go to the Redevelopment Authority and to discuss any issues that they had with the loan, and to present what HEADC was proposing in terms of making HEADC whole again, because HEADC protects its assets very carefully, because it doesn't belong to us, it belongs to the people that, you know, use HEADC for loans, and HEADC can make, you know, do their own development projects. So therefore, Counselor Bartley's question, I could not have stayed there as a city counselor. I was invited as a member of another board for the purpose of what that meeting was about, and that falls under the, the executive session rules itself.
Okay, Counsel Bresnahan?
Just briefly, I, I agree with Counselor Sullivan, it should not take two years, almost two years to get executive sessions minutes, unless it's a personnel matter. It's a public board, the public has a right to know what's going on. If it's not discussing personnel matters, suspensions, or disciplinary actions, I mean, you know, at, at a minimum, the city council has a right to see, July 1st, 2015, it's almost been two years. I mean, anything that happened at that meeting, I mean, you know, their city council is not, not, not even sitting on this board that, that may have had an opinion on that, but it was two years ago, so there's nothing we can do. So if Counsel Sullivan files an order with, with respect to any minutes of executive orders, I would co-sponsor it with you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on nine, 10, and 11? Okay, all in favor of receiving these three items?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Petitions?
12 and 13 to Finance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up items 12 and 13 as a package.
13 is a renewal, you still want to take it up?
Finance, please.
Okay. Uh, I, item number 12 is a petition of Farah Baramunde of Yellow Cab for five new taxi cab licenses. Petition number 13 is also from Mr. Baramunde of Yellow Cab. He's seeking a renewal of his taxi cab license. Motion on the floor is to send 12 and 13, uh, to Finance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Right, right.
Counsel McGee?
And, and Counsel Lisi is, is absolutely correct on the renewal, normally just grant them. This gentleman was asked four times, four separate finance meetings, to come in for his petition for taxis. No show. We gave it leave to withdraw without prejudice, because for whatever reason, he chose not to come in and talk to us.
And now he's back.
So now, the real trick is, here's my five, I want my one renewal. No, you're coming in. We want to make sure this taxi is up to code and safe for our constituents. We're not going to fall for that little trick.
Very good. Thank you for paying close attention to that.
Mr. Baramunde?
Yes. He's, he's been around a long time, so we're, we're familiar with him. All in favor of sending to Finance?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
14 through 18 as a package.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to take up items 14 through 18 as a package, all renewals. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to, um, grant all the, receive and grant all the renewals pending all municipal fees and, um, charges are unpaid.
Yep. Second. Yep, motion has been made and seconded to, uh, receive and grant all of the new renewals for items 14 through 18, keeping any pre-existing conditions, um, and also assuming that everybody is, um, current on any of their taxes and municipal charges, and I'm going to give you the scoop on all of that. So, number 14 is the petition of Joseph Harfoush for a renewal of his livery license garaged at 395 Maple Street. I see he has a notice of insurance for business auto coverage from Plymouth Rock, so that He has a statement here, uh, Mr. Harfoush resides, uh, in, on West Franklin Street, and his taxes are current, and all of his other municipal charges are current, so that takes care of number 14. Number 15 is the petition of Grandma's Attic Thrift Store for renewal of the second-hand license at 1976 North Hampton Street. All, all taxes and municipal charges are current. Item number 16 is a petition of Brad Matthew Jewelers for a renewal of their second-hand license located at 2225 North Hampton Street. All taxes and municipal charges are current for number 16. 17 is renewal of, uh, Thomas Lucchese's renewal for his 19 pool tables and one billiard table at 151 Chestnut Street. Current on everything. Number 18 is a petition of John McCann for renewal of his home occupation permit at 415 Ingleside Street for a massage, therapy, and yoga business, and Mr. McCann is current on everything. So the motion on the floor is to approve items 14 through 18. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of approving the petitions, item 14 through, item number 18.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Greenie?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
14 is.
By your vote, you've approved those five petitions.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules to take 19 and 20 as a package and ship them over to DPW by DGR?
Second.
Sure. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take 19 and 20 as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion on the floor is to send 19 and 20 both to the DGNR Committee. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Item number 19 is a petition of United Material Management of Hoyok for a new special permit for a motor vehicle repair garage in the IG Zone located on Main Street, uh, at MAP 55 Block 0, Parcel 6. I don't see an address, but, um, item number 20 is a petition of T-Mobile Northeast LLC for a new special permit application for an antenna for a wireless communication facility located at 1221 Main Street. So those are the two petitions, and the motion on the floor is to send? Mr. President? Both of these over to DGNR. Yes, Mr. Bartley?
Number 19 is Scott La May.
Oh, number 19, Scott La May, okay, so we're very familiar with his, uh, location. Okay, very good, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of going to DGNR?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. President's Report, as you know, my favorite part of the meeting. Um, the, the main thing I wanted to remind everyone is that on Thursday, if you can attend, at 6 o'clock, the Fire Chief, as well as the State Fire Marshal, is going to be having a meeting for the city councilors, um, to discuss the northeast, uh, street fire, and what occurred, didn't occur, and, uh, it's to be strictly informational for us. As you know, there is potentially pending litigation and other matters related to that, so it is my understanding this will be an executive session. It will not be a meeting of the Hoyok City Council, it should be noted. There will be absolutely no deliberation, there will be no votes taken, this is strictly informational for us to receive information. So, um, if there's executive session on the part of the Fire Department, I'm not even sure if they're going to convene the commission to do it. I'm, I'm unaware of that. All I was told is that we can arrive, that, uh, this is going to be the Fire Chief, and, uh, the Fire, uh, State Fire Marshal is going to have some information for us at 6 o'clock on Thursday. So, um, just be aware of that. But, uh, it is for the benefit of the city council, and it's not open to the public. So, all right. So that's, uh, Counsel McGee.
Uh, just one thing to point out because of time stuff, it's not as sensitive as that one. This one is more, a little more, more fun. April 27th will be the second annual Spelling Bee. And the reason I bring that out, and it's at Gateway City Arts, is because, uh, the city council that signed up last time is going back.
The buddy chambers?
No, it's the Whereas Spellers. I, I got confirmation, it's, uh, Counselor Josie Valentine, uh, uh, Valentine, sorry, Joe McGivern and myself, if you want to get another team together.
Thanks to Josie, we had one word spell right.
Well, we did, we got one right out of, out of three.
Hoyokin to improve.
But if we can get another team together.
The Puerto Rican got the word right, there you go.
Will you spell check?
It, it's a great fundraiser for a great cause. Um, it's not there to embarrass people of whether you can spell or not, it's a group effort, so if we get another team, I'm promoting.
So it's teams of three?
Teams of three, it's a great time. Um, for some reason, we're glutton for punishment, we're going back, the three of us, if we can get another group together, please, please join us, our, the school committee.
So that's, uh, Thursday?
Yeah, April 27th, 5:30, Gateway City Arts. It, it, it's a great week for the Homework House, so.
Uh-huh.
And Paul Pear of the League of Department is, is like the, the lead on this, and he is adamant, I gather, great time, once again, we did okay.
We did. And it's 150 a team, so each person donates $50 to Homework House.
Sure, oh, that sounds nice, okay.
Just note last year that in the, not our group, but the, uh, the, the A group, the kids from, uh, Smith College, was it?
Oh, God.
Defeated the kid from Brown University.
Oh.
I told him that, too.
Nice.
Mr. President, if, if Counsel McGee's done to ask a question?
Of course.
Um, Thursday night, I, I know you gave the explanation of executive session, but can we have that in writing from the Lot Department, maybe as Sarah's last act before our party?
Sure.
Just so we know when we're there, we're going to, you know, if we're challenged, what we can and can't do.
Absolutely. Well, again, you know, um, open meeting law is very important when we're talking about deliberation, when we're talking about voting, we're talking about all those things, so, um, we, we, I would put it akin to, um, we go to, um, the Water Department, they have a meeting with us, or the GNE Commission, if we're receiving information, I believe we'll be okay with that, but absolutely, Lot Department, please, I know, I believe she's aware of it, but, uh, take a second look at it again, um, as well. And we can make whatever necessary changes, if any, that we have to, but I want to also recognize Ryan for a lot of hard work in putting that together. I know it's, uh, not easy to, uh, corral everybody for a meeting like that. Um, other than that, um, I know we're going to have a number of items going off to Finance, but I just wanted to, uh, just draw everyone's attention to, this is going to be a really interesting next few months, um, regarding the, uh, financial issues, uh, the number of transfers coming in, uh, the ones that haven't even already come in, à la snow, and some of these other things that are going to be some big ticket items, and, um, it's just that we're really getting down to, uh, down to the, uh, a thin amount of dollars. So, uh, this is going to be a very interesting time, so I would encourage everybody to, to do their homework at this period of time, and to really look into these proposals and what you think needs to, uh, be prioritized and otherwise, okay? So, uh, it's going to, financially, it's going to be an interesting next few months. And then, um, in another month, we're actually going to have the budget in front of us for FY 2018. So be aware of that, and over the course of May and into June, uh, we're going to be kicking off, uh, the budget sessions again. Counsel Bartley? Um, it's my understanding that he started this week, and, um, he started at the budgeted amount. That was in the, uh, the budget, I should say, even after there was a cut in that budget. Uh, and I believe he also received a small stipend from the retirement board. So, um, Josh is, I think, is gonna do a phenomenal job, and very optimistic about him. I know Bellamy feels very strongly about him, so I had a good opportunity, uh, to meet with him and Bellamy together. So I think, uh, I think we're, I think we're in good footing with him. He's a hard worker, no question. So, uh, the good news is, I think at this point, in terms of council appointments, I think we got a full deck at this, at this point. So that's good, and we need that. Alright. We've taken care of our one ordinance committee report. Uh, we're now off to finance committee reports. Item number twenty-two A. The committee on finance to whom was referred a collective bargaining agreement with the UPS EU local four-two-four DPW supervisors have considered the same, recommend that the CBA be approved. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, and Bacon.
Quick procedure question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine of motions would go with that to fund this year's allocation. If that is approved, do you want to do the contract first, then get to those, or do you want to put them together?
Um... That was wonderful. Who? He doesn't play, he can't, no.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight is the one that goes with this one?
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
You're only gonna do one reading on this, though, right, of, uh, twenty-two A? That really doesn't require two readings.
No, that's why I'm asking, procedure-wise.
So why don't we do this, and then take up twenty-eight and twenty-nine as a package?
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
So twenty-one A is to receive and adopt the, um, that would comply with the...
The contract.
Yeah, local four, there it is, four-two-four, local four-two-four.
Okay. Do you want to just give us maybe a brief overview? What was the amount of the pay raises, I believe that's projected, if you recall?
Yep, so...
This is a three-year agreement, I believe.
It's a three-year agreement, hopefully have the contract.
Oh, let me help you.
It was zero percent in the first year, one percent in the second year, three percent in the third year, and then longevity was added to, uh, pay raise over...
Two percent in year three. Zero, one, two.
Zero, one, two. Alright, so zero, one, and two, and then the longevity added to it.
Yup.
That's what the three were.
Thank you.
And just to remind people, we took this up in finance. We gave it before this board, but we sent it back simply because of the allocation of funds for this year, which we passed a new ordinance that said, if you're gonna move money between line items, you have to get approval by the council. Well, the comment was, we took the money prior to that new rule being implemented. And the response by finance was, you can't do that because, as we've learned, everything is subject to appropriation.
Correct.
So we could've said no in finance, and the money that was moved was done incorrectly. So they have now come back, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, and doing it correctly, giving it before us to then pass it.
And I believe they also had moved the money before the contract had been even considered by the finance committee. So it's sort of, you gotta, one, you gotta, you gotta put your shoes on first, and then you can walk. So it's a two-step process.
So it's something we already took up, we had it before us, but we sent it back to get an answer to the funding.
Right. Counselor Bacon?
Um, just as a point of information, I think we may be in that same situation with snow removal expenditures.
And how so?
Because I think they've exceeded their budgeted amount for the snow removal, so I think we're in deficit funding for that.
Well, the state law allows you to deficit spend for snow.
I'm not sure how that works, in terms of where the cash is coming from.
I see. Well, it's all gonna come to a head here pretty soon, I can tell you that.
That's my point.
Yeah. I haven't yet received a communication from the mayor on any of these items, but, um, he's certainly welcome to call me at any time, or anybody else to talk. Maybe he'll come into finance to discuss. I'm sure we're gonna have some very interesting finance meetings coming forward. So, uh, nevertheless, twenty-two A is now before the body, and, um, is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to adopt the committee report twenty-two A.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan? Graney?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the committee report twenty-two A and that contract. Um, under the previous motion made by Counselor McGee, that was seconded, uh, to suspend the rules to take up, uh, go to now and take up twenty-eight and twenty-nine as a package. Um, all in favor of that? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Let me read these for you. Item number twenty-eight introduced by Counselor McGee is that four thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-four cents be transferred from the office manager line to principal clerk, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-two cents. Longevity, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Foreman, four forty-nine ninety-seven. Longevity, two fifty. Construction supervisor, four-four-six-point-three-six. Maintenance supervisor, four-seventy-six-point-eight-seven. Longevity, two fifty. Foreman, four thirty-five fifty-five. Longevity, two fifty. Recycling coordinator, four-seventy-six-point-eight-seven. So that totals out to forty-six seventy-six twenty-four. Item number twenty-nine, also at the DPW. Transfer from office manager, three thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-nine cents to longevity, two fifty. Supervisor of outdoor works, five-eleven thirty-two. Longevity, two fifty. Foreman, four thirty-five forty-five. Longevity, two fifty. Forester, one thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Total, three thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars, forty-nine cents.
Make a motion to receive and adopt and to pass first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yeah.
This is to fund that contract.
And just some numbers to go with it. For this year, the amount would have been eight thousand three fifty-five, uh, sixty-four cents, but since we've gone some time, getting closer to the end of the year, it'll be roughly seven hundred and, uh, seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and eighty-three cents. Next year, adding to the budget, because we're increasing their, their salaries, we're adding to the budget fourteen thousand fifty-four dollars. The following year, it'll be nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. So by adding these to the budget, you are automatically increasing each and every year.
Right.
So you need to know that you're automatically doing these numbers.
Yup.
But it's, it's part of the contract. Once again, we cannot negotiate contracts. We can only approve the allocation of the funds.
That's right. Yup. That's exactly right. Any other discussion? Okay. Oh, Counselor McGivern?
We cannot negotiate the contract, but I do think we can and should approve the appropriation for these deserved salary increases for employees of the city of Hoyok who work very hard in what they do, and I certainly think they deserve some type of increase, as modest as it is on an annual basis. All employees deserve that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Pass second reading?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting both transfers, item number twenty-eight and item number twenty-nine for the DPW for the pay raises. A no vote is to deny both.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, you've approved the pay raises for the DPW. We are now back. Still remaining in finance, we're back at item twenty-two B. Item number twenty-two B, the committee on finance to whom was referred a financial transfer request of fifteen thousand dollars from education and training to claims. Recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, and Bacon.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yes, the fifteen thousand represents money we need to do another settlement for the Essex House. This is with, uh, Mr. Jesus, of which we're, she was looking for a certain amount, I think it was thirty-six thousand. She's settling for fifteen. Uh, there is still one outstanding with Old San Juan. There may, may, be others. We're still waiting on that one. We'll have to wait and see. But this is another Essex House settlement.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Pass the second reading?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and approving the fifteen thousand dollar transfer. A no vote is to deny.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Oh.
Graney?
Oh.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, three nays.
By your vote, you've approved the transfer. Twenty-two C. Item number twenty-two C is from the committee on finance to whom was referred a financial transfer in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from free cash to veterans' benefits. Have considered the same, recommend that this order be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, and Bacon.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Mr. Mahoney was in here, as always, when he does, uh, the budget for this, uh, area, he's doing guesstimates, and he's actually crunched the numbers pretty well. Um, the total spent this year was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. What's left in there is about ninety-seven thousand. He projects that he'll need this amount to get him to the end of the year. It's for paying for the veterans' medical, uh, bills, of which seventy-five percent is reimbursed by the state, but the problem is the state takes a slight amount of time, usually six to nine months, to repay us. Of which, if it's for burials or for hotel, because someone is homeless for whatever reason, they're covering it for two to three days, that would be a hundred percent reimbursable. So, uh, as always, he, he comes in and he, he really tries to get us within the right number. There was one year he came in, it was a huge number because it was his first time around. But he's actually done very well in, in getting us these numbers. So he says this will be the amount he needs to get to the end of the year.
I wonder, now, did the, if you, I mean, maybe you don't know, I don't know, maybe somebody in the room does. Does the Pentagon, or does somebody pay, uh, like for this, uh, for Corporal Hodderman the other day to, uh, pay for his funeral expenses or any of that?
He mentioned that, we, you know, we, once, you know, we congratulate him before we started meeting for all the work he did with regards to that.
Yeah.
Phenomenal job, especially with the citizens of Hoyok.
Oh, it's incredible.
For that.
Incredible.
And for you taking the moment tonight for a moment of silence. But he said with regards that the, um, funeral homes around here all pitched in and helped out with that.
Oh, that's awesome.
He didn't give us a total, we didn't want to pry on it.
Sure.
But he said everyone around here chipped in.
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome.
So I didn't answer your question fully as to whether the Pentagon came in. If you want me to fly down there, I will. I know he said that everyone else chipped in for that one.
And speak, just before I recognize Counselor Graney, I also just wanted to, if, for those that don't know, it's come to my attention that, uh, Mr. Mahoney is retiring.
Yes.
Um, and we're gonna miss him. Um, tremendous faithful servant, many years in Springfield, but we had him, uh, I'll be thinking his best, his prime years of his career, and, uh, we wish him a happy retirement. Uh, Jim's a great guy, and he's done a great job for us. Counselor Graney?
No, I just thought that, I think the Pentagon allocates some, but not much. I don't know for sure, but I think Mr. Mahoney could probably answer that question.
Alright, very good. So, um, counselors, we have at first reading twenty thousand dollars for veterans' benefits. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Pass the second reading?
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of approving the committee report, which is to approve the transfer of twenty thousand dollars. A no vote is to deny the committee report and not pass the twenty thousand dollars.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the twenty thousand dollars for the Veterans Department. Twenty-two D is a report from the committee on finance to whom was referred a financial transfer request in the amount of eighty thousand dollars from free cash to expenses, rent. Recommend that the order be adopted. Um, counselors McGee, Tomlin, and Bacon.
Make a motion to receive and adopt, pass first reading?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt and to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, I'm, and there will be another request, um, in our orders for another eighty thousand. Uh, but what this represents is rent for fifty-seven Suffolk Street for the school department. Uh, as we mentioned, uh, from the letter we received from Doctors Reich, there are options out there that we can proceed with in order to either move, or buy, or do something with the building. Uh, but for now, they're under, you know, they have to pay the rent. They're three months in the rear, and they're starting to get delinquency notices. So it's money that is owed to the landlord for using the space. Now, this will only pay to get them current. They're gonna need another three months, given for the end of the year. This is what we did when we cut the budget. We cut the budget about one-sixty in order to force the hand of trying to deal with the problem, which is fifty-seven Suffolk Street. In our meetings, you know, other things develop, whether it's the annex building, or if you're gonna build a building, do you then take over a building that you're moving out of? Ie example would be MedCaf School. Not saying move to MedCaf, it's an example. As I, I told the president, call it Kmart Plaza. Move to Kmart Plaza, if we don't want to name a building. So if we build a school, and you're moving to Kmart Plaza, that's one option. It really is, in the, in the group's opinion, was more discussion on all of us because we cut the budget to try, try and ask them, what do they want to do? Here, they were proactive, and they said, we're gonna go to the owners and say, we have to do something. We have four floors, we only need two. So they're now entering into a new contract to move down to two floors, which then will reduce the rent in half. So starting July first, there'll be half the rent compared to what they have now. But right now, they're still under the old lease, they have to pay the rent. reduce the rent in half. So, starting July 1st, there'll be half the rent compared to what they have now. But right now, they're still under the old lease, they have to pay the rent. They're three months in the rear. That's what this represents. There'll be another request for 80,000 to pay the next three months to get you to July 1st. So, that's what the numbers tell us. The committee did work very hard to provide the city council as a whole with all different options and all different issues. Where you want to go next, tell us, the committee's still waiting. Doctors Reich has been more than proactive in trying to deal with this issue prior to other superintendents who really told us one thing and then took off, i.e. Lawrence School. So, with that, this is what the 80,000 represents, three months of in the rears.
Mr. Chairman, just on the point of the lease itself, we're month to month, so why did they have to wait to July to do the move to two floors? I understand that, I heard even as much as they're going to one floor. Now, I heard something different tonight, that they were in one of the other communications, floor, four floors to two as opposed to two to one. Is there a reason they have to wait to July? And then the other thing is, you know, at the budget, which was last May, we said to them that, you know, you've gotta do something by January. You know, you gotta either move or buy or do something definitive as opposed to paying the rent. And it seems like, is it fair to say that they've put it in and left it to the Finance Committee and sort of the City Council to pick which of these we should do? I mean, it sort of seems like that's what I'm hearing from them.
No, it's a good question. It is month to month, of which we have been working on it in a committee. And we're at the point where we have presented to Finance and we presented to the full City Council, and now we're coming back again. So, the time is what has expired. We've done multiple site visits, we've discussed possible solutions based on certain scenarios, of which they're all over the board. You could say, don't talk about the annex building, leave the people over there and we'll just take X building and move there. Or, do the annex being of the nature that it is, do we board it up or take it down and then move everyone somewhere else? It was all over the board. The real issue was, seeing how it wasn't just a school department issue, which we could make it be that, then, you know, what do you want to do? What's the feel of the council? And that's why we're, we as a group are coming back. And that was one of the suggestions I made. It's not just a school department issue. We could make it that, and that's fine, we'll tell the doctor to make the decision. With that, we're at the timeframe we're at. They don't have enough money to pay the rent. They've been there, they've been using the building. The landlord is owed 80,000. Now, the next three months, well, okay, move. Well, that's gonna take money. Where's the money come to pay for that? You gotta box everything up, go to the next site. If that site's ready to move into, you have to pay for that as well. Once again, the end all is, where's the money depending on the solution to what you pick? Just pick 57 Suffolk Street. We're gonna buy it. Imminent on name, take it. Where's the money? Is there a bond? There's no bond before us.
No one's proposed one.
Exactly. So, now you're asking a doctor to do something when there's no funding before us to make that decision. What we're saying is, you have a laundry list of options, which is what we asked as a group. Do something, you have to X amount of date, which when I made the vote, I was very clear on my vote. Most likely realistically, we're gonna have to give them the money anyways because the timeframe was so short. Of which, they did their job. Now, it's, okay, if you really want to push the button, go ask for appropriation. We don't have it. So, now the realistic term is, you have to pay the rent.
Yeah, a couple of points I'd just like to point out is, one, we've mentioned all this in May, and of course, we mentioned it the six years before that. And every year, we get up to the, oh, there's no time left. So, it's, this is a, you know, it's a standing headline from them that we have no time left. The second point is, as you know, we can't originate any appropriations here. So, to look to the City Council and say how we're gonna fund all this, that starts down the other end of the City Hall, that's not here. City Council, I mean, we dispose of things, right? Give us a plan, whatever it is, maybe come up with two plans. Maybe one is we buy and the other is we move, because I know there's a difference of opinion in this room, what we do. But the council has no proposal to even vote on. The third option, which doesn't seem viable, which is just keep paying the rent, I've already made my position clear on that, at least I can only speak for myself. And then, the other issue is, why does the City Council have to continue to vote to give them more money when we've already met our net school spending requirement? We're actually $8 million over the legal net school spending requirement. They could take funds from elsewhere to pay this or pay halo rent or pay lord knows what. They don't want to do that, but we've met our legal requirement for school spending. So, when they'll say we don't have the money, that's because they don't want to take it from somewhere else to pay this. They want us to keep coming up and funding this. But that, to me, means the taxpayers flip the bill continuing, so, you know, if you have some thoughts on that?
To kind of, I don't want to go past my three turns. Yeah, six years before that, you're absolutely right, we have been begging the school department to do something. That's not this gentleman's fault. Doctors Reich set up the committee and did what we asked to do, and did it immediately. Now, you know, I can go back and say to the group, Counsel Leacy and everyone else, let's, two plans, that's it. You get two options and give it back to us, which then, you're right, still gonna go back to Room 1 to have what's the funding. If we want to do it that way, I'll go back to the group and say, give us two plans, we'll give it here, if we like the two plans, we'll ship them off there. If that's the overall view, fine, that's what we'll do. But what they have done because of our actions, it's not like they didn't do anything. They did set up the group and it wasn't just, oh, we met, we had coffee, actually, they never provided coffee.
No, you guys worked very hard.
No, and I'm not saying that we worked hard. We actually worked to allow them to come into a new agreement to reduce their footprint. He's been up front, Doctor Reich's been up front, so has Anthony Soto in the group. I have all this space, I don't need it. It's stupid. That's what his comment was, reduce it. How? Well, they went out and they negotiated half the rent. Granted, we still are paying rent to a building that we don't want, or maybe we do want, it's up to us, but they have done some work to get us where we're at. That's a half cost savings. Probably not what we all want, but it's a start.
It's an improvement.
Right. So, I don't want this council to say, we haven't done anything. We have done something to get us where we want.
Nobody's saying that, but we haven't gotten to a solution that the City Council can vote on. That's what this council needs. We need something that we can vote on, that the mayor approves of and gives to us that this body can act on. Counsel Roman.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you so much, and thank you to my colleague, Counsel McGee, for clarifying those points. And as the counselor who's serving on the ad hoc committee on the school budget, I can tell you that that outlook looks even grimmer than this larger context and conversation to the tunes of millions of dollars in the hole for next fiscal year, so we're trying to sift through all that. Yes, around $5 million in the hole. So, we are actively working towards that process, so I agree with my colleague, Counsel McGee, that I would like to see at least that proposal that came before us tonight that's in Finance. So, that way, exactly, my opinion is, exactly, I want to see one or two concrete plans coming back into budget time. I know Todd and I are gonna sit down, my guru on the budget, with regards to, as we get closer, we need to know what's definitely happening, because I don't want to go into another budget cycle where we don't know what's definitely happening with that. One, and two, I know I kind of keep beating a dead horse in this body, but it's April, and if we're out of free cash by May, for me, that's not a balanced budget. And if we continue to keep funding and back and forth, and I'm beating the dead horse on the balanced budget amendment, but I think that we have to put in tools in place as a body to make sure that this budget is truly balanced because we keep funding. And for me, this is one of the biggest expenses, and I know looking at that Budget Committee line item, leases and rents are going up 39% next year just on average cost. So, there's a lot of ways that we can save. I applaud the committee for all their efforts, I think Counsel Leacy too, for all their work on the committee and the school committee members. I would like to see something more definitive, hopefully, you kick that around in Finance and hopefully go back to the committee before July 1st, before the next budget cycle. So, we're going in approving definitely what's gonna happen with the school department, because I happen to be in that mindset. If not, if we're above our school net spending limits in a month, and I'm the chairman of the joint committee, then that's all we can give and appropriate, because how do I determine between a school building's rent or a park or a sidewalk that needs to be fixed, or all these raises, or overtime? And so, we are dealing with a smaller and smaller budget every year. I know you all know that, and I'm the newest guy in the council, but in sitting on that Finance, that ad hoc committee around the school budget, it's gonna be a dire situation. Who are they gonna come to first when they're in the hole? Not Ghostbusters, the Hoyok City Counselor, so.
Counsel McGivern.
The thing that we lack here is, and will never have, but it makes this argument, this debate very difficult, is we have no line item control over the school department budget. And with a school committee that's not in a position to have line item control, that means the city has no line item control over the budget. And what's scary is, take that a step further, the charter school money is funneled through the city. We have no control over charter school money, but I bet you if something happens, they'll be looking at the city, not at the state. I'm gonna vote in favor of this because I think symbolically, we cut the money for the rent, sending a message. And as Counsel McGee pointed out, and as we know, Doctors Reich more than met us halfway. He worked very hard. And I think at this point, to keep the, to satisfy the agreements and symbolically, because I agree with you, Mr. President, we've done our net school spending and above. But I'm gonna ask, there's an item coming up on the agenda, I'm guessing is going to Finance for $400,000, that our auditor, the finance control person from the schools and our new auditor, give us a detailed explanation of where the schools spent money this year. Because if they got X amount of money and they're spending it over here without any input from the city, school committee, City Council, maybe mayor, then how do we know that, I'm sure it's a legit cost for transportation, but how do we know that could not have been worked into their budget differently? And live within your budget is the message that we also sent. In fairness to the voters of the city, I think we need a detailed explanation of the monies that are being spent in schools this year.
Counsel Leacy.
I just wanted to say that I think that the committee has been doing the work that it's been tasked to do, and that I don't, whenever, you know, we're talking about what the options are, I don't feel that this committee feels that it's empowered to make a final decision. And so, I don't think that it would be able to make a final decision in terms of getting out of Suffolk Street and ending that cost. It's been a very collaborative effort, and so I think that we're at this point where we see some options, but we're looking to the City Council for some input as to which way to go.
Okay, I mean, I think we should enter that into our discussion right now. Agree with you, I think the two options that I've heard, I haven't yet heard of another option from councilors, is we acquire the building, that's option one, and maybe the only other add-on to that is, do we move the annex into that building also because there's issues at the annex? That's a, maybe you do and maybe you don't, maybe you have both buildings. Option two, which I've heard from councilors, is we move out of that building, okay, we move somewhere else. Is there a third option that councilors would like to have presented? Because I'm happy to ask the mayor to give us appropriations for one option, you know, and I'm happy to support the committee to say, you've done your work, you did the research, now it's time to take action. If the committee just leaves it as, well, here's eight options and then nothing happens, then a lot of your good work is gonna go to nothing. And my point is, we now gotta take the action step, which is next, which is getting something from the mayor that says, this is my, this is what I, the mayor, want to put forward to the council, and then we'll vote. So, I'm happy to offer those two, and then the council can debate those two unless there's a third option. And then we ask them for all three, and then maybe he just defers us, he says, well, I'm gonna submit all three of them, and whatever one the council passes, that'll be the one we do. I don't know how he wants to approach it. He may say, no, I feel strong about one, and that's what I'm gonna have you vote on.
And then I think, just to continue the point that I'm making. So, I think it's at a point where the committee needs to engage the mayor, and that is something that we've not been doing, because we have been ambassadors of the City Council and really trying to make sure that the council is happy with the options that we're presenting. And so, we have not been engaging the mayor.
Right. Counsel Graney.
Just a point of information or a question, and it's something that I have not been able to find out, I don't know if this committee has been able to find out, or this council, or whether the school department has been able to find out, but is there any other municipality in the state of Massachusetts that pays rent to house their school committee or their school department offices? And if there is, I'd like to know who they are, where they are, what their contracts are, et cetera. It seems to me that this is unique, that a city, a municipality, is paying rent to a private corporation to house government offices. It doesn't make any sense.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to Counsel Graney's question. I do know, on the state side, the state, the trial courts are all paying rent, they're all owned by private corporations, so, on that side of it, I guess it makes sense. However, I am going to support this, I was one of the many who voted to slash these funds to get the ball rolling, the ball has been rolled. So, we're actually going into the fourth month, I talked to Jim Sullivan of O'Connell's just the other day, and they sent, I believe they've already sent in a demand notice out. So, I'm going in to vote for this because it's the right thing to do, this company should be paid. Thank you.
Counsel Bacon.
Thank you. I'm in support of this because I think we did achieve our goal, albeit to your earlier point, later than we had hoped in the fiscal year of decreasing at least the liability that the city has on the rent. And I do think, when, a few months ago, they came in with all the various options, it was clear that the only thing that could actually happen in less than probably a year, reasonably thinking, given the way the dynamics were, was to lower the footprint and cut the rent in half. And so, I think it's a good faith effort. Could it have happened three months sooner, maybe? But I do believe if we hadn't done what we did, nothing would have happened. So, it's a concrete thing, it was the viable opportunity at the moment, and fortunately or unfortunately, I think we're gonna have a lot of debate over the next step we do take. Because I think we're, have mixed minds on the matter.
Was a new lease signed, or are we on still month to month?
Still month to month.
So, my question is, okay, let's just say that they decided to occupy all this space for the last three months, including March. Why couldn't we go May 1st to less space, or June 1st to less space? Why does it have to wait to July? What's magical about that date?
There, in essence, they can move into the spot, but there's gonna have to be some rebuild. So, they are, clarification, it's not going from four floors to one. Whoever said that is wrong, it's always been four to two. That's been as clear as day. So, I'll make that point.
Okay, very good.
The next one is, you just can't say, I'm gonna go from four to two and just, everyone just walks into this room and sits. There has to be some type of build-out, there has to be some phone connection, so it has to be some work to achieve.
So, July 1st?
And that was the...
Or is that gonna have a delay?
Anthony Soto said, we are going forward with, you know, doing the reduced size, as well as, you know, kind of the modifications that are needed. They're projecting July 1st going forward because it's the new calendar year for them, or fiscal year for them to go forward, so it made sense due to the timeframe. To us, seeing how we don't have a plan in place, you know, option one, you know, they have to do something. This is their good faith effort to reduce the cost to themselves. So, in essence, Kevin, as Linda said correctly, is, we didn't get exactly what we wanted, but we're starting to get there. So, this is the first step, of which we did mention in Finance, do not commit to a two, three-year lease, if anything, a year or less, you know, to make it easier for them. Because the move, you know, let's, once again, we're gonna move to Kmart Plaza, as an example. There's a timeframe to that, it's not just a day. And that's been in our meetings as to the costs associated with that and then the move. So, it's gonna take some time, we're doing that buffer.
So, the committee, if we were to adopt this, the committee will, as Counsel Leacy suggests, will go to the mayor and say, we're gonna, we need to pick one of these or pick multiples of these, and let's just make a decision based on the recommendations, because, like, what's the next steps with these recommendations?
Look, you as a group tell us. You assigned us to go and do something.
See, I don't see that as the council's role, though. I mean, I have my opinion, but, I mean, we don't originate appropriations.
Kevin.
Why should we have, just in fairness to the City Council, why, since when is it that we tell the mayor what to bond, what to spend, and then he then turns around and then says, well, the council went on record in saying, I'm in favor of this, so now I'll forward that forward? I mean, the committee should, he should pick one, I mean, individually, I mean, I've already expressed my opinion, I think we should purchase the building, but I know that's not a unanimous opinion here, right?
Then take the committee report from Doctors Reich, and the eight options, receive, refer to the mayor.
Refer to the mayor.
If you want to do that. Once again, go back to the history. This council cut the budget to have something addressed, and then a committee was set up of Counsel Leacy and I were on that, we did something.
Yes.
Now...
Good suggestions, now an action item.
It's all the City Council that's been doing it, so Doctors Reich is saying, hey, look, here's City Council, because you guys were the ones that initiated it, what do you want to do? So, if you want, receive, refer to the mayor, if he comes back tomorrow with options one, two, and three, or one option, okay, then we'll go from there.
That was on the, wasn't that on the agenda?
Where do the recommendations sit right now?
Is that in Finance?
Do we receive them?
Do we receive them?
I think we received them at a prior meeting.
I think that's in Finance, isn't it?
Finance, yeah.
No, we already received them and sent them out to you guys. Now, what we could do is, I'll file an order, it won't be a late file, and we'll send it to the mayor.
I will co-file it with you then, whatever, too. I just want to take it to the next, let's get, because otherwise, you know, this just continues to drag on and this is expensive. Counsel Tallman.
No, it's a valid point, and I think this has been going on for years, as you stated, and we gotta do something now, not that we got the people working on this group that give us the decision, we got options one to eight. And I think most of us, you know, discussed that here a couple of months ago, what we want to do. So, now we just gotta move and get this done, because if not, you're gonna talk two, three years down the road. And if we get the funding, if we can vote on this, and we get an option that we're all on agreement with, we get it done.
I agree. I mean, it's just that we've been discussing all these very viable, good ideas for the last six years, and it takes a, just, we need a proposal, something the council can vote on, whatever that is.
Anything tangible.
Exactly. Okay, so anybody else want to speak to the 90, 80,000 dollar transfer?
Copy, please.
All right. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved?
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Okay, motions been made at second to pass the second reading. Any other discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of approving the transfer to pay the rent in the amount of $80,000. A no vote is not to approve that.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
I think things could be handled better. And I think for a small amount of fee, you know, twenty to forty thousand dollars, which isn't small, but in the sense of public safety, we get an independent study and I get a consultant that does this professionally and to determine whether or not we have too many deputy chiefs, not enough deputy chiefs, too many fire engines, not enough fire engines. But to allow the Fire Commission to tell us they're going to black out a fire engine and jeopardize the citizens of Hoyok, I do not agree with. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, I'll say that I'm not a fire expert. I leave that to the experts, the chief and his colleagues, you know, the very respected commissioners or whatnot. I was at the meeting that we had last week, and I was also down at the fire. And, you know, I saw some horrific, awful things. And I also, at this time, I'd like to give a big, you know, big props to South Hadley and Chickaby, who I was standing there when their fire trucks came hauling in and, you know, they just, I thought they were Hoyok firefighters. They knew exactly what to do. If they were doing it, it was fantastic. You know, I also listened to the call, and I also will be going to the meeting at the fire station Thursday night. One of the things that concerns me is, you know, we're at the meeting with the, you know, the higher, upper echelon, the, you know, the executives. However, the people that were actually on the street, the men and the women who were actually the firefighters, you know, a lot of them are telling me they're not feeling safe if that engine closes down. And I couldn't imagine a public safety person going to work and not feeling safe. And that's, that's the people who are protecting these different areas. And if the firefighters aren't feeling safe, I can't imagine the residents would be feeling safe. And my job, and I've said this thousands of times over the last eighteen years, is quality of life issues. I've been working in quality of life issues. I'll continue to work on quality of life issues. And making sure that a fire truck stays onboard is certainly a quality of life issue for me. So I'm certainly going to keep pushing to making sure that we have all the fire trucks mandated all the time, and certainly no brownouts. Let's back up these men and women in the Fire Department. Thank you.
Mr. President, fellow councilors, I was at that meeting, obviously, on the Public Safety Committee. And I just want to call your attention to twenty-three D. And I know that the council president mentioned that it says one thing on the jacket and one thing here. I just want to make it crystal clear that the Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilor Breslin here voted at that meeting that this particular order has not been complied with. And it not, it has not been complied with. I think the mistake out there, somebody said that it has been complied with, it has not been complied with, and that letter should go to the mayor. That letter should go to the mayor that has not been complied with, not that it is complied with. Okay? Thank you.
To the chairman, Mr. Councilor Breslin, the committee jacket says has been complied with. The agenda says it has not. Do you recall what the committee vote was?
The committee vote was that it had not been complied with.
Well, must we change it? I'm changing it on the jacket.
All right. So I make a motion that we reconsider our actions that night and adopt the order and say it's been complied with and send it to the mayor's office for action.
Not it has been or hasn't?
Right, because, I mean, right, but I mean, if it has not been complied with.
Well, you could just say they didn't do what you asked them to do, and you could just adopt it that way and send it off to the mayor, I guess, and say, is there something else you want them to do that's not been complied with? The committee recommends that the mayor do it, or Fire Department do something, or take the actions in the, in the...
I think maybe a new order would be filed for that.
Yeah.
Well, just keep it as the order's not been complied with. Send it to the mayor's office.
Or, you know, Danny, maybe file a late file, I know you don't like doing them, but maybe having a late file order saying, please, do what I want, or do what our committee wants.
Before we, just a minute here.
I know he knows, but it's good to put it in writing. Thank you.
We're still on twenty-three B anyways, so when we get up to twenty-three D, we can take that up.
That was the twenty-three D was what was read, though.
Yeah. D, yeah.
That's why I jumped to that one.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, that's right, because we... All right. You're right. I stand corrected. We're on twenty-three D. We'll have to come back to twenty-three B and C. So the committee jacket says has not been, and twenty-three D says has not been. Very good. Is that still your, you want to keep that as has not been?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So we received the order, we all heard the history, I'm sure there can be more comments, but we adopt the order and send it to the mayor for action.
Okay. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank the committee for the hard work on this very important issue. In nineteen seventy-six, I was not on the Board of Aldermen, Mr. President. I was in college. But those years, there are two things that happened, just to give you a little reflection, was nineteen seventy-six is when the Highland Fire Station was closed, and that's when we had more than seven pieces of apparatus. There was at least one pumper up there. I'm not sure if they had a ladder truck, but I know they had at least one pumper. That also was a year that we, that the Board of Aldermen, or it came to fruition in the late seventies, the Board of Aldermen lost the battle with Mayor Pro over funding of, I believe it was either the Fire Department or the Police Department, where the court stuck with the mayor saying it's subject to appropriation. And that's, even though we set the ordinance for the amount of firefighters, the amount of policemen, the mayor can set the appropriate, initial appropriation at whatever they believe is available. I'll be happy however we're going to word this, never mind the complied with, I think we just got to send a message that we believe seven apparatus, right now, at a bare minimum of three firefighters per apparatus, is what we need for the entire city. You know, it's not a neighborhood by neighborhood thing. They work together as a unit. They're strategically located in the three different fire departments, you know, to make sure that the fire response time is adequate for every neighborhood. Engine two is a very, very necessary piece of apparatus. Not only is it the backup in the main headquarters for a station that covers more ground than the two substations, but it's also a backup that can go throughout the city if necessary. I think what we're sending is the message that we have to find a way to support the seven apparatus. Now, mind you, and please, I'm not trying to discourage a vote here, but I said this earlier, we're sitting in a room with no free cash, talking about little expenditures, not knowing how to play for snow removal. Counselor Roman just said, we don't have a balanced budget. We're asking the mayor to go deeper into the hole. We're asking the mayor to use stabilization fund to get us through these tough years, in my opinion.
Counselor Roman.
Yes, thank you so much, councilors, and I thank the committee again for doing this exhaustive work. And I would like to thank the Fire Chief and the Commissioner that's in question, I just want to throw his name out there, it's Commissioner Garcia, he put it out on his Facebook. I was invited to the Fire Commission's meeting, they had it, I believe it was a week ago, at six o'clock at the Fire Department Headquarters, the twenty-seventh, when this was discussed. So his post was in response to an open meeting law, public meeting, open to the public, and that's where that was discussed. And I just kind of want to speak in support of a good friend and a colleague, Mr. Garcia, who, yes, does a good job. And we have later orders filed down the road, but being a former Flats resident, born and raised, cast family down there, I think Commissioner Garcia is doing a bang-up job. So I wanted to just, number one, point that out. Number two, with regards to my own elongated process with the Fire Department, brownouts, blackouts, as this body knows exhaustively my history before even coming on the council, and inquiring as to the same reason, I know this is an issue to some, and I know in my own ward, we've seen multiple fires in this one year, multiple upon multiple upon multiple fires. I have to applaud the Fire Department. I thank them for being quick, responsive, and there in a hurry. I want to ease the minds, and I thank the Fire, again, Commissioner and Chief for coming down. Counselor Tolman was there that evening. My residents, we had an exhaustive conversation around fire, safety, and concerns around budget. I want to applaud this body for fully funding whatever we're given from the administration. And yes, I am one of those councilors who wholeheartedly believe that we are underfunding our Fire and Police Departments. It doesn't mean that at this current level that we are still safe with regards to the number of men and women that are on these apparatuses. As I heard in both of our meetings here and in the meeting in my ward, we on average need four or more individuals on these apparatuses. We don't make that decision as a body, that comes from the mayor's office. And in that situation, I do wholeheartedly disagree and feel we need to fund fully these departments, so then we're not having to have these comebacks for overtime or still trying to fund these things. If all these apparatuses are fully funded and staffed, then we won't have to have those concerns. But to my constituents, the ones that were there that night and the ones listening this evening, I want to just dispel this rumor that Ward Two somehow was left out of coverage, or this notion that fire trucks don't come from other stations. In Ward Two, we are supported by the headquarters that's on High Street, Station Three, Station Five, and Station Six. There is a small subsection, though, right on the line of West Springfield, that has no coverage according to these heat maps and according to the fire coverage maps. Furthermore, along the Southampton and Westfield lines, those residents don't have any coverage. And all the way at the tip, my poor counselor, Ward Seven, Todd McGee, those constituents have no fire coverage. But based off of the history, again, and I thank Counselor McGivern, please forgive me for saying this, the dean of the council for giving us those history and knowledge, but the debate over the placement of these fire stations happened long before this body. And they were strategically placed for a reason, and I thank the Fire Chief for explaining that to us, why they were strategically placed. I'm not willing to go back in history and debate why the council or Alderman before us chose to close Station Two down to move it on High Street. But when I look at this coverage area, and I look, and I always request, every fire incident report that has happened in my ward since I've started comes to me immediately, and I look and check for all those details in reports. But what I want this body to do is have a simultaneous conversation. Yes, we need to demand from this administration for more adequate coverage, and at the same time, as a body and as a community, we need to understand that if we are giving them the budget that we give them, they have to make decisions based on what we have, but the community is safe. And based off of this map alone, and we all got this based off the Fire Chief's last explanation, I know that my ward is covered by more than one station. And the police even talked to us about mutual aid, how when there's a big fire, and they get that immediate call, and the first truck is on the scene, and they see that it's bigger than normal, every single fire truck from the City of Hoyok goes. So I want to dispel that rumor that that's not happening. Every fire truck has to attend that fire, and mutual aid comes in from other towns and cities, and we asked about that. Our constituents asked and said, hey, Fire Chief, hey, Commissioner, do we pay a dime to those cities and towns? No, we don't, because we do the same for them when they're in need. So this city will be covered. Yes, I agree with my colleague, Counselor McGivern, we have to have larger conversations with the smalling and dwindling number of finances and money that we do have. What do we prioritize? We're saying that the police and fire need more money. Schools, five million in the hole, we have to work together as a community. And yes, when we talk about public safety, I know this is in separate lines of items, when I go down to Ward Two, when I go down to South Hoyok in the flats, they say, Nelson, I call for a fire, the Fire Department's there in two minutes less. When I call for a robbery or a drug deal, it takes forty-five minutes for the Police Department to get there. Why? Because the Ward Two cop car also attends the Hoyok Mall. So anytime there's something at the Hoyok Mall, you could call from Churchill, I just reported a drug deal or something, a constituent called me anonymously, in the Churchill section, forty-five minutes to one hour, by that time the deal was gone. We have left, oh, exactly, exactly. They're both there, both in Ward Five cop car. So we have to talk about holistic public safety issues and crises and how we address that. But I just want my constituents to know that as the Ward Two counselor, yes, every day I care about public safety, public safety, both Fire and Police, and anytime there's a fire incident where we're demanding those reports, we're going out there and meeting with the Fire Chief, he has my cellphone number. I text him sometimes before he texts me to tell me that there's a fire in my ward. What's going on? What's the situation? I want to know. But I want my constituents and I want the citizens of the City of Hoyok to know that I do support the Fire Department, but we have to demand more funding, we have to look at this in a holistic way. And also, I just want everyone to know that Ward Two does not just constitute Engine Two. It is a multifaceted, covered area by multiple fire units. And yes, I agree with my colleague, Counselor Breslin, we shouldn't be blacking out any apparatuses. I do wholeheartedly agree with that. So then how do we get to that notion, looking at the budget situation that we have? I don't know. I just wanted to clarify those points and know that for my constituents in my ward, Ward Two is covered. You can rest your head knowing that there's multiple apparatuses, and my counselor, Counselor Tolman, was there. And I had a constituent who came in with the city's budget and was grilling the Commissioner and the Chief on line-by-line items of the budget and where the money's going. Terry Murphy, former Board of Alderman colleague of ours here, who grilled the Commissioner and the Chief for hours. So I just wanted to kind of dial back, ease that tension of our constituents, to know that, yes, we have to do this, and we also have to look holistically at our budget. Thank you.
Counselor Breslin.
Thank you. I appreciate your thoughts, Counselor Nelson. My comments are not that any ward is not counted, it's about response time. It's not about whether or not an engine is there, it's about response time. If you think the engine from the higher headquarters is going to get to Northeast Street as fast as engine, or Station Three or Five, you're wrong. It's about response time. When people are jumping out of buildings and fires are burning up buildings, it's not about whether or not that ward is covered, it's about the response time. I would prefer, because of the building and the proximity of the buildings and how dense that area is, that's why they decided to have two engines at headquarters. That's why they've always had more engines downtown, because we have the blocks. We got, there's no four or five-story blocks in Ward Three, Five, Seven. I mean, so, you know, in that strategic plan with the circles, that's as old as the chambers we sit in. We need something a little bit more modern. The mayor of the City of Hoyok, the Fire Chief presented the mayor with eighty-eight firefighters, the mayor cut ten out of it. The City Council cut nothing except the Fire Chief's raise, which we all know was put back in. We didn't cut firefighters, we didn't cut overtime, we did cut nothing out of that budget when it was presented to us, except the raise. The mayor took it upon himself to cut the firefighter's request from eighty-eight firefighters to seventy-eight firefighters. So, I mean, that's where the issue is. And so I just want to remind, this is not an issue about whether or not there's a fire truck here or there or where, it's a matter of response time. I don't want an engine from headquarters going to my house. I want Station Three to respond because it's closer to my house. So, yes, wherever the fire is, everybody comes, from South Hadley, Chickaby, multiple, whatever the alarm, however many alarms it takes, that's going to take place. But the issue is response time. If you have more engines in an area where we have all these buildings downtown, I think that it behooves us not to have the two engines like we have forever. And it's funny that you bring up Terrence Murphy, because you'd ask him, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it was his vote that overturned eight to seven on the blackout in seventy-six, as he was the former city council. So he's probably well-versed in that topic, so I certainly would run that, run those thoughts by him. But again, if they're going to brown out, blackout, anything, if they're going to cut public safety, my recommendation, I ask you all to support it, is we find, get a consultant out there to tell us that, you know what, you don't need engine. Those circles, they've been drawing them circles for years, there's got to be a more professional way to do that. Let's have a professional company come in and tell us, you know what, maybe we're too top-heavy, maybe we've got too many deputy chiefs, we don't need that many deputy chiefs. Maybe we have so much overtime left in the rest of the fiscal year that we could put that engine back online. It's online some days, it's not, it's browned out, it's not browned out. We've got over a hundred thousand dollars in the overtime budget. Are they going to use that much overtime before July first? I mean, could we get, I mean, is it, what is it worth? Is it worth anybody getting hurt? Is it worth anybody not going home as a firefighter? I mean, these guys are risking their lives, and for us to accept the brownout, it just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
If the chairman is willing, and we have the motion before us to adopt the committee report that the order has not been complied with, so can we amend that order to add the request to bring in the outside consultant, because we don't have language to that effect in front of us, through the president to the chair?
To put an RFP out costs nothing.
Right, right, but I'm just saying...
Then we get, then we get a cost of what it costs, and then we ask for the money. Put an RFP costs us nothing.
Right, but I'm just saying, if we're sending this as a resolution to request this, and we also want to get an outside sort of professional review accomplished to put that into this communication, would you want that as an amendment, or no?
I mean, I don't mind that amendment, but I mean, I think, I mean, you know, we're talking about, you know, staffing analysis, call volumes, I mean, I would like, I would like to get that a little bit more specific, but I don't have a problem with throwing that out there as the idea and then doing an order at the next meeting. I mean, I don't want to drag this out any longer, but I have no issue with that at all.
Okay. All right. So the current motion on the floor is the committee recommendation, as we know, is that this order has not been complied with. And are we asking, do we want to add anything to that, like mayor do something, or mayor take additional action, or anything else, or just leave it at that?
That we ask the mayor to make this order complied with.
Okay. So that recommend that the order has considered the same and recommend that the order has not been complied with, but the committee requests that the mayor take this action. Does that sound reasonable?
Sure.
Okay. So that's, is there a second to that? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of adopting the committee recommendation?
Roll call.
Okay. Do three members want roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call. That's two. Three?
Roll call.
Great. Roll call vote it'll be. So, the committee recommendation at this point, let's just take one verbal vote first, which is that the committee recommendation be amended to add that additional language versus that recommend the order's not been complied with and that the mayor take this action. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And now we'll take a roll call vote on adoption of the committee recommendation as amended.
President Jordane, I'm actually confused as to whether or not we're talking about twenty-three or twen, I'm sorry, twenty-three A or twenty-three D.
We already took care of, we're on twenty-three D.
Yeah, B and C we skipped over, but I accidentally...
Yeah, we did skip over, because we started talking about D, so I went to D after A. But we'll come back to B and C. So we're voting on twenty-three D.
Okay, thanks.
No problem. Okay. Clerk will call the roll, this is on twenty-three D. You read the order there, and that have considered the same, recommend that the order has not been complied with, and we, and the committee requests that the mayor take this action. Clerk will call the roll.
LeBron Martinez?
I'm sorry, so a yes is for him to take an action?
Yes, to do what the order says, which is that order that the mayor adequately fund the Fire Department to keep all the apparatus in service and in operation. This includes five companies, two ladder companies, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Leasey?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Breslin?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved item number twenty-three D. Okay. Item twenty-three B, the Committee on Public Safety to whom was referred an order that the Hoyok Fire Department's surveillance video or other video available and call logs be provided to the Public Safety Committee for review for the Northeast Street fire recommend that the order has been complied with. Counselors Breslin, Leahy, Graney, and Sullivan.
Receive and adopt the committee's report.
Second.
Okay, motions have made it, second to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counselor Breslin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, so the chief came in that night and basically said that State Police Fire Investigator, Mike Mazza, had the film, the footage, the call logs, and he was willing to show it to the City Council collectively. They said a date and time is April sixth. Mr. President touched upon how that meeting's going to be set up, so it's April sixth, six p.m. at the Hoyok Fire Department Headquarters. Thank you.
Counselor Roman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I thank the committee again for doing this work. I watched the tape back, and I just want to add and interject to this larger conversation that were happening specifically, because this is around one oh six Northeast Street, is the fact that, you know, and recently, I know it's made headlines, but a lot of these landlords in this community have to step up with regards to their buildings and their, the type of buildings that they're running. And I applaud Counselor Breslin in his former position, and I agree, we're talking about budget, both the Building Department and the Health Department need to be funded better. Both buildings, I mean, one of the buildings on Main Street that burnt down, all of those residents, by the way, only one is left in the City of Hoyok. All of the rest of the families have moved out of the city from the Main Street fire. That landlord had a list upon lists upon list of health code violations and building code violations. And literally that recommendation that if he didn't comply was a week before the fire on Main Street happened, including rat feces, biting of the wires. Thank God that that landlord is no longer in charge of that building. The bank has taken that back over. But I wholeheartedly agree, and I thank the committee for doing this work, that we also have to continue to, yes, focus on the actual physical fire safety, and at the same time, hold some of these absentee landlords and landlords that are truly just slum lords accountable. Thank you.
Committee recommendation is that the order's been complied with, there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-three C, the Committee on Public Safety to whom was referred an order that the Hoyok Fire Department immediately provide all records regarding use of any time off, tardiness, or absences. This is to include all scheduled or unscheduled illnesses, vacation, or any other time off for December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and January first, two thousand seventeen. Recommend that the order's been complied with.
Receive and adopt the committee's report.
Second.
Motion's been made, second to receive and adopt the committee report, now was recommended by Counselors Breslin, Leahy, Graney, and Sullivan. Under discussion, Counselor Breslin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The order was filed on the seventeenth, and on the eighteenth, the chief had responded to the maker of the order, Counselor Sullivan, and said that all Fire Department was fully staffed, anyone that had requested time off had done it previously, no one called out sick that day. So the order was complied with. Counselor Sullivan.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We already took care of D, we're now on to E. The Committee on Public Safety to whom was referred an order that the Public Safety Committee invite in both the Chief of the Fire Department and the Chief of the Police Department, and a representative of Hoyok Medical Center to discuss the new ambulance servers with the city, recommend that the order has been complied with. Counselors Breslin, Leahy, Graney, and Sullivan.
Mr. President, if we could take up twenty-three E and F, suspend the rules, I'm not even sure that F was actually...
Twenty-three F is, appears to be a duplicate.
Right, I just wanted to be sure that that's what it was.
So we'll...
Okay.
All right. So why don't we just have a motion?
Twenty-three F to give leave to withdraw?
Yeah, item twenty-three F, suspend the rules, give item twenty-three F leave to withdraw as a duplicate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So it takes care of twenty-three F. And on twenty-three E, which I already read, the committee recommends that it's been complied with, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the police came in, the Fire Department, a representative from Action Ambulance, two or three representatives for Action Ambulance, one of which was the owner, to discuss how this all transpired. There was a committee set up, representative of the Fire Department, the Police Department, representative of the mayor's office, Purchasing Office, the Law Department. They sent out an RFP, four companies applied for it, one of which was our former AMR, but Action was awarded the contract. Um, be previous to Action, AMR had two, two ambulances within the city of Hoyoke when available. Um, they were, as we know, they were stationed out at the Hoyoke Fire Station on South Street. Uh, they were also covering other communities, so they weren't always available. Uh, Action has three ambulances now dedicated twenty-four-seven to the city of Hoyoke. One is being stationed at Station Three, one at Station Five, and one at Headquarters. Of those, one is what they call a basic life ambulance. The other two are advanced life ambulances. Basic life means there's an EMT on it, and the, and the other two, uh, an advanced life is a paramedic, which basically means that this ambulance is a small emergency room. They have prescriptions and so forth and so on. An EMT can give, uh, the basic, uh, life responses and get them to, to the hospital as soon as possible. Paramedic can do a little bit more. Um, they gave us a breakdown in the month of February, which was actually the first month here. They had nine hundred and fifty responses, which, as you can imagine, in a twenty-eight day month, nine hundred and fifty-eight calls. Eight hundred and five of those calls were transported. Um, Action, the owner of Action is a former firefighter, uh, so obviously getting into the ambulance service may be lucrative if a former firefighter started an ambulance business. Um, they are based out of Wilmington, Massachusetts. Um, it, it was, it was, you know, decent discussion. Carl Cameron from the Hoyoke Medical Center was there well, as well, although he was not at the table to discuss, uh, the contract. Um, we have ninety days, which will take us to, from April, sometime in April, to come up with the lease for them actually storing the, uh, ambulances in, uh, three of the stations within the ci- uh, city of Hoyoke. The whole gist of this is they're working off what's called a mobile integrity, integrated healthcare social system. In, in other words, a lot of the people that call nine-one-one are the same people every month. It's Joe who fell down because he was drinking too much. So what they're doing now is they're coming up with a, a concept that, um, they resource these calls out. Instead of the ambulance going to someone every three weeks because they, they have the same situation every time, um, they're trying to get the calls allocated out to social workers and people within the community. So, you know, Joe, who's always calling the ambulance service because he forgot to take his diabetes medicine and he's elderly, they're working with agencies within our community to stop those type of calls going into the, into the, uh, ambulance service and, and getting them, uh, triaged before they continue to keep calling the fire department or, or the nine-one-one. Um, the nine-one-one still, as we all know, it basically goes to the police, uh, actually, they're, they're gonna be going to the police department, the fire, it, which refers it to the fire department. There'll be someone from Action Ambulance in the fire department headquarters, in the alarm room, triaging that call, um, and then the, 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 uh, ambulance will be dispatched. So it's, it's a quicker system. There's more than three ambulances, but there's definitely three allocated to the city of Hoyoke twenty-four hours, seven days a week. But there's more that are out there that kind of just hang around, um, just in case there's, there's, uh, more, more business. Um, you know, it, the, the gentleman from Wilmington, the former firefighter who started this company, w- was very forthcoming. He seems to have a very open dialogue with the fire department, the Hoyoke Medical Center, as well as the police department. Um, uh, so Kathy DuGue from the fire, police department wasn't here, but, um, Manny Feebo spoke on her behalf and said that things are, things so far are working very well. Everyone is communicating, so people seem to be happy with that. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, as Counsel President said, it was a fantastic meeting. We got a lot of information out of these, uh, uh, this new company. Um, my biggest takeaway is, when I asked, uh, the chief, I said, I go, you know, one of the things I talked to you about when you first became chief is having our fire department become an ambulance service. You know, why aren't we doing that? It's a moneymaker. Everybody knows they're making a lot of money doing this. And he says, uh, the real reason is this company's charging the city of Hoyoke zero. Uh, all we have to do is provide places for them to store their ambulance, and, and they're not charging the fire department or the city any money. Um, uh, I thought that was a key takeaway. Um, I also thought it was, it was interesting, in the contract, they have to have two ambulances in the city of Hoyoke at all times. However, uh, they have ambulance contracts everywhere around here. So, uh, as they said, majority of the time, there's up to ten different ambulances in the city of Hoyoke at all times. I think that was a, another key takeaway. But it was, it was a great meeting.
Counsel Graney?
Yeah, in addition, uh, just, just briefly, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow, uh, members of that committee, but I believe that the, uh, gentleman, uh, Mr. Cameron from the Hoyoke Medical Center also stated that, uh, the new emergency room, I think, is going to be up and running sometime around July of this year, which is also gonna greatly enhance the service, the medical services to the people of Hoyoke. So that's another good positive thing that's going on.
Mr. President?
Counsel Bacon?
Thank you. And just from an economic point of view, the ambulance company owner did note that they had a hundred and fifty calls that they responded to, where for a variety of reasons they did not transport the individual. And those, all of those calls are non-reimbursable. So you're looking at a robust company that is a multi-community company that can absorb a high degree of non-reimbursable work. He did say that Hoyoke is higher than the other communities they serve in this regard. And I think that that approach that they're taking with sort of triaging the frequent callers, uh, will probably help both in terms of the outcomes for the patients and the, um, non-productive calls, if you will, in terms of transporting as well. But it was a pretty significant number. Thank you.
Counsel Bartlett?
Just a quick, uh, comment, uh, and, uh, just so Dan, if, if, did you get a copy of the RFP, Dan? No, the RFP, I asked.
Did get a con- copy. Didn't you send us a copy of the contract, sir?
No, I got the contract.
I didn't see the RFP, and I didn't get the old contract, which I wanted to see.
Can we request the RFP, please?
In the old contract?
Can you provide that to me, please, Ms. Carroll?
In the old, in the old contract? Thank you.
And then second of all, Mr. President, if there's a lease, uh, does this body not approve said lease?
Approve all leases.
That's right. So I thought we do.
Okay. I think they're supposed to get one within ninety days of February, when they went into effect.
They, they get a proposal, Danny.
Right, they don't, there is, I don't, I'm just saying, I don't believe, there is not a lease as we speak.
Uh, no, because we haven't approved it. So I know there's, I know there's no lease. I, I, you know, copy that. And then the last one is, what, what are we, what are they doing with, um, South Street building, please?
What are they doing with it?
Yeah, they're in there.
Yeah, they're in there. They're in there, they're in Headquarters.
I thought, okay, I thought you said three, five, and Headquarters.
Three, five, and Headquarters, and that, that's just kind of a spare one, I guess.
So there, there are gonna be four buildings then? Thank you. Without a lease.
Or a license.
Or a lease.
Oh, no, that was a cute move by the former, former folks. Man, that was, that was great.
I think we've got everything covered now at this point. We got licenses, we got leases, we got buy, sell. If somebody has another form of real estate, we'll file, I'll file another order. I, I think we've closed all the loopholes at this point. Um, so, have, without further ado, uh, the committee recommends that this order has been complied with. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twenty-three G, as F was a duplicate. Committee on Public Safety to whom was referred an order that the city of Hoyoke adopt, I believe, or update its City of Hoyoke two thousand sixteen natural hazards mitigation plan update?
That would be adopt.
Thank you. Have considered the same, recommend that the plan be approved. Counselors Bresnahan, Leahy, Graney, and Sullivan.
Uh, make a recommendation to receive the, an adopt the committee's report.
Okay. Motion's been made it second to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counsel Bresnahan.
Sure, briefly, the, uh, this comes before us frequently. This is a, a natural hazard mitigation plan, per, done basically through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Fire, Police, Health Department, MEMA, FEMA. Uh, it basically, a couple points, it makes communities eligible to apply for hazard mitigation funds, which is less, costs less than actually reacting to a disaster. It's basically having a plan, uh, in place, uh, to, to prevent disasters and, and how to, uh, um, you know, ha- be ready for them when they do happen. Um, this was approved seven years ago. It's a way to protect infrachucks, infrastructure. It needs to be approved in order to get grant money, uh, floodgates, the wall that we have down on Water Street, all those, all those types of disasters. So that's what we're trying to prevent, or have a plan for.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, very good. All in, uh, do we need a roll call vote on this, or just to, uh, or is this just a voice vote? It's gonna be fine, if you know. Just for, just for the sake of, uh, I, I see something here that's a, a correspondence from the fire chief to the mayor. FEMA Agency Region One has completed its review of the hazardous mitigation plan found at approval pending adoption. With your support, I'll have it placed on a council agenda. With its approval jurisdiction meets the local mitigation planning requirements under forty-four C FE two oh one. Just for this, just to be safe, I think we'll have a roll call vote on this. So if the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is to adopt the committee report and approve the, the City of Hoyoke two thousand sixteen natural hazards mitigation plan, and no vote is to deny that.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved that plan.
President?
Yes, Counsel Tolman.
And we just, I just noticed the, uh, representative from the schools is here. Would you like her to come in and sit down with us?
Of course, always welcome. Feel free to take, uh, two seats are open at the moment. You're welcome to have either one. Uh, we have no public service committee reports, DG and R Chartering Rules, uh, or joint committee for this particular meeting. I believe, uh, Chartering Rule's gonna be next week, right, Mr. Chairman? Plan is?
Yeah. Really?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was walking my student representative. I'm negotiating with the chairman of the finance committee about the next two Mondays, which one's gonna be which Monday. But right now, we'd like to do Chartering Rules on this Monday, with my apologies to Counsel Bacon, but we're trying to work it out.
Okay, all right. You'll let us know.
DGR is next Monday.
And DG, oh, DG and R's already on Monday?
Yep. Yep. Six o'clock.
Six-thirty. This is coming Monday. That was Thursday.
No, Monday.
Next Monday.
All right. Gonna have to have the, uh, another chairman's meeting.
That's a holiday. Will it be, will City Hall be open? It's Patriots Day.
All right, next year.
Oh, was it really? Yeah. I doubt it.
Yeah, so tell them.
Tell them, no.
Seventeenth's out, Joe. Just so you know, it's a holiday.
Patriots Day.
We're negotiating.
Yep.
He, he keeps trying.
That's this Thursday. Hello.
All right, well, we, uh, so now we're off to motions, orders, and resolutions section of the meeting. We already took care of twenty-eight A, we already took care of twenty-nine. So, um, Counsel McGee has another, a, a number of, uh, financial transfers. I'm assuming we're gonna see a bunch going to finance.
Yeah, could we take thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five? And I do believe there's two late files for finance?
All right, why don't we do those later, if that's okay?
Wait, wait, it's, and I'll make a comment on it.
Oh, okay. All right, so we-
There's four hundred thousand, and then, um, I think there's another-
Oh, very good. All right. So motion on the floor is finance, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the chairman proposes that we send thirty through thirty-five to finance, and he would also like to suspend the rules to take late files B and C and D. They're, they got like, they're growing puppies. Each of these, time I see my email, it's, uh, there's another cousin or little, little puppy or bunny coming out. Uh, so we got late file B, which is, uh, four hundred thousand transfer for free cash to, to school, um, school transportation. Late file C is three thousand for general claims from free cash. Late file D is thirty-seven thousand five hundred from the library, and it looks to be portions of the DPW budget, as well as short-term interest, to go to halo rent. So we'll see about, uh, that one as well. And, um, I believe the motion is to have, suspend the rules and to have D, C, and D also go to finance.
Finance? And I'll just give an update on the numbers?
Yes. So the motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded to suspend the rules, take those all up as a package, take them up now, send them all to finance. And that has been seconded. Under discussion, the chairman, Counsel McGee.
So when we started the year, uh, I have my glasses back, uh, we had free cash certified at two million three, uh, twenty-four, seven, uh, seventeen. Then we had to balance the budget, that was a little over a million, that dropped us down to a total of, uh, one point three, rough, rough numbers. Then we did some transfers in order to deal with the Essex House, police cars, and a bunch of other stuff, and then some more stuff tonight. So you're roughly at about five eighteen, give or take, if I might miss one of the transfers while going through all the, uh, the agendas that I have. Um, and with all the stuff coming through now, especially the four hundred thousand for transportation, add another eighty thousand for rent, because we're gonna owe that, and maybe the four thousand for, uh, salary and everything else, if you add it all up and subtract everything out, you're roughly left with about thirty-four thousand two fifty-eight, give or take.
And that's before snow.
And that's, and that, and I'm gonna get to that.
That includes the stuff that's, because I'm seeing three hundred thousand for unemployment.
Right.
And I'm sure Counsel McGivern will appreciate that one. That's one of your favorite topics.
But some, I haven't seen that one, hence it's a late file. I don't know if that's from free cash, or if that is from stealing from other accounts than-
Taking from other accounts, it appears.
So, i- in that-
Oh, right, so that's not going against the free cash total.
So your free cash, and like I said, it, it's-
But that'll be next year's free cash being-
Right.
If we're spending it now.
Right, and then getting to the snow issue really is a deficit spending. We, we owe the money, are we gonna carry it over to next year? Which is, it's still a cost. Um, and, so those would be your numbers roughly, give or take. And I did get an email, uh, from a constituent asking me why I changed my vote tonight on the CPC, and it actually goes into accordance with this. I filed an order last spring that every single park in this city, not just Ward Seven, get wood chips and the apparatus get fixed. Rowan Park, the ladder is broken. It's still broken. It's got graffiti on it and swears and other stuff. There's glass in the dirt, there's glass in the mulch. You go to Ward Seven, just go down to Ian White, forget Kennedy Park. The railing's missing, the metal is sticking up. I was down there with my two children yesterday. Then go to Kennedy, it is the tallest one for a slide. It's got a piece of plywood. It's got a hole in it. It's a piece of plywood, folks. If the child pushes it just enough and falls out of it, it's, it's almost like a two-story landscape. We're on the hook.
Right.
I filed it a year ago. I don't want a city councilor on this board, but I'll be guaranteeing you one thing, the money coming in from CPC, uh, uh, the CPA, goes toward paying the parks.
That's right.
I'm not gonna hold it anymore just because we're all picking and choosing what we want. That's why I changed my vote. My kids are important, so are the kids of this city.
That's right.
We're not addressing these problems. So if a city councilor is appointed and doesn't show up to the meetings, I'll be the first to file an order to remove you. But my problem is, we keep holding it, holding it, pushing it down the road, and now the money's gonna sit there. One of the comments was, well, let, let the money sit there and then we'll get to it. No. It's over a year in my issues. And then the project that I worked a ton of hours on, Community Field, we're going to put Jersey barriers around the facility and leave it alone. That was one of the proposals before I got my hands on it. It's starting to fall apart again, folks. We have all filed orders. You wanted a, a water fountain, actually no, it was Gladys wanted a water fountain, bubbler so people could get water. I wanted a light over the park where the dog park is. You filed an order to put an awning in case it's raining for the dog park. 1-2-3, 0-0-0.
That's right.
Nothing's getting done.
Everything we hear is no money, no money, no money.
So, once again, I didn't want a councilor on there. I can't be any more clear. But we had a compromise, we voted for it, it got vetoed down, and now it's going to sit here. You are down to $34,000. I've never seen it, I've been on here 12, 12 years now, 34,000. We got problems, folks.
That's right.
Start dealing with them. These are the problems that have to be addressed, and we're not doing that.
Well, no one can question your commitment to the people of Ward 7 and elsewhere, that's for sure. Well, it's the whole city. Right, no, I know, I know. I'll, but I, I couldn't agree more. Council Roman.
I just have a question for the finance chair, I was just wondering, this demo supervisor and demo worker, isn't that the positions we just authorized this year? Is that where this money's coming from? Through you, Mr. Chairman? Is that, is that not?
Those are in the budget, we budget it.
We, we approved it in finance to add two new positions in order to deal with the demo. The person who brought that before us was that man right there?
Yes.
And went through it in detail as to why it would be beneficial, the cost savings, how to address these buildings, and now that's where the money's coming from. I don't think they fill the positions. Once again, if you don't fill the positions, the money is there, you can then take from it and push it somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to call that out for the public at home because again, we're talking about safety, safety of the community, safety of the people. I applaud Counsel Sullivan, I was flabbergasted when I saw the agenda. I'm like, how are we pulling from positions we just created to address safety and demolition concerns issues when we were promised that we were not going to put demolition money in CBDG last year, but to create and fill these positions, which we did, and we spent tons of hours of work on, and now we're putting our citizens at risk? We have the top, most abandoned and blighted buildings in the city, and we were told that these positions would be able to go in and stopgap and prevent an Essex House 2.0. I will not support cutting from positions we just created. What sense does that make for the safety of the citizens of the city of Holyoke? And this is why, again, I applaud, and I hope my colleague before he leaves again, we can file the order again, this is why I believe we need a balanced budget order or law here in the city of Holyoke. And I'm grateful to my colleagues for approving the budgetary line item transfers when it comes to salary lines. We just created these items, these positions, and we're talking about the safety of the citizens of the city of Holyoke, and even around preservation or whatever, these positions were supposed to help stop that, to preserve and protect these buildings that could come down at any moment, and here's those two line items. I'm perplexed, I don't think that's smart for the city, I look forward, I will be at that. I've been adopted as a sixth member of ordinance from the public because I was there so much, but I plan on attending a finance meetings because this doesn't make sense to me, Mr. President, and I thank the chairman for clarifying that for me.
Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion on the floor, I know, is to go to committee, and I would just ask and try to put this in a, in a more bigger picture, but if you look at everything we're pointing in the finance committee this evening, we're, we need to get a handle, and I said this earlier, on the whole budget. And when I say the whole budget is, we need to know what the schools are spending money on. In the past, that was very difficult to get that answer. Counsel Roman keeps, you know, whispering in my ear over here that we're all hearing about this $5 million deficit. If the schools have a $5 million deficit, they can't close. That's a stabilization fund gone. And, and if we have, as a community, no control over what's being spent in schools, we got, we got some big questions to ask, and our state delegation had better be prepared to answer that. Because how do you spend money you don't have at the end of the fiscal year, ask for $400,000? We know the $300,000 for unemployment is going to be related to the schools, no one else has gotten laid off in the, in the city, you know, one, two here, there, you know, occasionally someone, you know, down the road comes back and it bites us, but that's $300,000, again, related to the schools. For, for, if no other sake, we need some transparency on how the monies are being spent in the schools, and why we're waiting until the final quarter of the year, you know, to try to, to make ends meet. And, and I think that those are fair questions all taxpayers should have an answer to. So at the finance committee meeting, Mr. Counsel McGee, if we could have the auditors, the new auditors, the, the finance, um, com chore, what do we call the school person now? Doctors Reich, who I, I think on, in a management point of view, does a very good job, but we need the answers to be put on the table so we can make a big-picture decision, not just getting through this year. Because this, I haven't seen any mayor scramble like this since 1992. You know, and, and, you know, no offense, but I vote against the demolition people because I said at the time, we can't afford them. Now we're using the demolition people money to pay for stuff that we, we thought we could afford, but the money's not there.
Yeah.
Because there were layoffs that we had no control over, you know, in the schools. Transportation class, we have no control over in the schools. There are salaries in the schools we have no control over. Let's find out what they are.
Right. When you see stuff like this, it looks like erratic budgeting, you know, I mean, at a certain point, it's like a scramble. You, you've got how many holes in the dyke, and you're trying to, you know, so it will be good to get a bigger perspective, so. Lot of leaks. Okay, great, any other thoughts on this? All right.
Mr. President, I just wanted to clarify, earlier in the meeting, you had mentioned about net school spending. Did I hear you correctly when you said that we have already funded the schools 8 million over the required net school spending?
Law requires us to give approximately 80 million, we give 88 million when you do all the in-kinds. When you actually go through the sheet of actual things that are, is our required spend, we're about 8 million over what we're legally required to give for what's called minimum net school spending.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly.
Poorest community in the Commonwealth does the most for schools in terms of net school spending.
That's right.
Across the board.
As if we have an extra 8 million laying around, but we give it.
And yet, they let money come from our schools into charter schools that we have no control over.
Yep, and we have actually less control now because we have no school committee. And that too, we have a lot going out of town for that as well. Yep, that's absolutely right. All right, any other thoughts on this? Okay, motion is to send all of those items, that's late file B, C, D, and items 30 through 35 to finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 36 is introduced by Counsel McGee, that the DPW repave Whittier Circle when the street repaving starts, the road is in bad shape and needs attention as soon as possible.
She even adopted DPW.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the DPW under discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. 37, introduced by Counsel McGee, that the city install permanent speed bumps on George Frost Drive, a resident petition to be filed, temporary speed bumps and traffic study has been completed.
Ordinance.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to ordinance.
Can I be added to that order, please, as an employee that takes that road every day?
Okay.
And sees the highway feeling over there.
Adding a friendly Counsel Valentin as a cosponsor, without objection. Counsel McGivern.
Is there a petition available or a petition completed?
I'm assuming you'll put that together for us.
Pick it up.
Oh, yes, so go pick it up. But we'll have that for.
Do you want me to get it?
The maker of the order is aware.
I drive by every day.
He's aware.
All right, good.
Yeah, no, it's not the ward, I did reach out to the ward council.
Oh, okay. Is that, is that five right there? That's right, that is five, actually.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm getting calls about parking out there, too. It's turning into the college parking lot as well.
Uh-huh. Okay, so a motion on the floor is to send 37 to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 38, introduced by Counsel McGee, that another crosswalk be painted at the corner of Lincoln and Nanituck. Note, currently there are three crosswalks painted at the intersection, however, the west side of the intersection crossing from our place over towards Carve Salon is unpainted. With Little League season at the park rapidly approaching, we need all the crosswalks painted, the new one added, and an update on the solar power blinking crosswalk sign and light to be done as soon as possible.
Receive and adopt and the DPW, what about the engineer real name?
Second.
We don't have a city engineer, so.
Where's that stuff going to?
Mike is taking care of it.
Yeah. Who is an engineer, so I don't know if he's got two hats, probably.
With regards, I know Josie and I were technically approved for those blinking crossing walk lights, solar ones, and did we get an update on the funding for those? Did we?
I have an update if you want me to share it.
Sure.
Because I've been pestering Mike about this quite a bit. Um, I'm just going to look at the, I'm sorry, the email that I got from him. So, um, when I recently asked him again about this in terms of timeframe, what he said was that the flashing beacon for Ward 4, which was the Hampden Street there by Stop and Shop, was submitted as part of the complete streets prioritization plan, and that once it would be, that once it's approved, that they will begin construction. So I asked him if I needed to follow up with the mayor's office, and he said that, um, that I don't have to, that it should be a few more weeks until we hear about the complete streets funding, and that DPW is running it and coordinating the projects. So I'm assuming yours is on the same list, but you might want to check in with him.
Would stop sign solar be on the same list?
I don't know. So that's the update from Mike himself.
So motion on the floor is to receive 38, to adopt it and send it to the DPW. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 39 is introduced by Counsel Roman, that the city clerk and registrar voters provide a list of all the current commissioners in the city and what ward each commissioner lives in.
Receive and send to the city clerk?
Okay. All right, great, thank you. Receive, adopt, and refer to the city clerk is the motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Opposed? So moved, confer to the clerk. Okay, takes care of 39. 40, introduced by Counsel Sullivan, to review and amend ordinance 18-35 as necessary to ensure more effective regulation and administration, ordinance committee?
Uh, yes, please.
Mr. President, isn't this, isn't this already an order that you had filed and I had filed, and it's been discussed several times in ordinance, I don't know if it's still in the jacket or?
There's something like it, yeah, you're absolutely right. Um, I'd have to check with Linda at some point, she, you have a running list.
I think you did the last one, but I did it before, and, no disrespect to Counsel Sullivan, I'm just saying it's kind of already in the queue.
What is, what is the reference?
It's about blight and all that stuff.
Yeah.
1835, vacant buildings.
Vacant buildings, the appeal process, we're supposed to be getting a recommendation from legal on maybe amendments. Paul, I think oversees that.
Those are either on the agenda for the 11th or the meeting after that. I've already started working the agenda out with Ryan. There's two that are similar.
Okay. So we'll send this one over there, I think, for safekeeping. So motion on the floor is to send to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 41 is also introduced by Counsel Sullivan, review section 6.4.5, number 5, signs institutional use.
Yeah, I know we just went through that a little bit, but we, there are a couple of things we still need to address around, um, pub, uh, institutional signs. And just as a quick example, if we follow our codes right now, we might as well tear down the sign for Hoyok High School, and we've got some problems around Hoyok Medical Center. We ought to get, we ought to get the institutional ones addressed as well.
And we're not supposed to have any scrolling signs, right?
Yep. Uh, all right, so motion on the floor is to send 41 to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. 42, introduced by Counsel Vacan, that a no parking here to corner sign be placed at Whiting Farms Road and Farnham Drive to improve the line of sight for drivers exiting from Farnham.
We receive, adopt, and send to DPW?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the DPW. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. 43, introduced by Counsel Vacan, that the city council issue a proclamation recognizing Rita Boucher as she celebrates her 100th birthday on May 10, 2017. Receive and adopt. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt this proclamation from Ms. Boucher. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Linda, you'll help us with the logistics of that?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 44 is introduced by Counsel Vacan, that a no parking on Cherry Street near Bowden Village be enforced with ticketing and towing. Continued parking is creating a safety hazard. Parking was considered on the street for this area, and it was deemed unsafe by city officials. Motion been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the police department. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 45 introduced by Counsel Vacan, that the manhole on Cherry Street near the exit of Bowden Village be cleared, the area floods and accidents have been reportedly caused. Could I be added as a cosponsor on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
You are the board councilor.
Yes. Can I get a measurement? No, I'm kidding. Uh, all right.
I'm not, um, I ask for it to be received, adopted, and referred, but I'm not sure if that goes to the law, or I think rather.
Uh, yeah, this should probably go to, what are they calling themselves? Suez now, I think, is officially, yeah. So receive.
To refer to Suez.
Yeah, with a copy to Mike McManus, too, please, though. I'll keep an eye on that. So all in favor of adopting, referring to the sewer department as well as Mike McManus? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Suez, yeah. Item number 46 introduced by Counsel Valentin, that two parking spaces opposite the driveway for 261 Elm Street be designated no parking to facilitate entry by the waste and recycling trucks at present. If a car is parked in this area, it's impacting the ability for trucks to enter the property and remove waste and recycling. Ordinance?
Ordinance.
Okay, motion on the floor is to send to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 47 is introduced by Counsel Bartley, that in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30B in the Hoyok Procurement Ordinance, the council considered declaring three parcels as surplus and available for disposition. These are as follows, 117-00-018, 117-00-145, 117-00-148. The parcels are more particularly described as, uh, the Hampden County Registry of Deeds Books 3658, page 325, Book 16921, page 558, and in Plan Book 378, page 97 accordingly.
DGNR, please.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to DGNR. Just a ballpark of where these are?
Periodic authority?
Oh, well-known to us. Motion has been made and seconded to receive, refer all these to DGNR, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 48 is introduced by Counsel Brezner, and that the DPW install a parking sign for loading in front of 27 Olive Street to allow the Bodega, Dwight, and Appleton, a place to have deliveries to its store.
Wait, not Olive, not Appleton?
Okay, Dwight and Olive. Uh, we'd have to have an ordinance created to do this. Yeah, okay.
They'll come in and explain the problem.
Okay, all right. Motion has been made and seconded to receive and refer to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Lot of Ward 6 orders on here tonight. Uh, entered, uh, item number 49, uh, introduced by Counsel Graney, the Hoyok Senior Center provide a handicap accessible table in the senior center for wheelchair and transport, uh, transport of chair citizens.
Senior Center, Senior Center Cafe.
Senior Center Cafe, yes. Okay, table in the senior center cafe.
Receive, adopt, send to the director of the senior center and board of directors?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the director of the senior center, the board of directors of the, which is the council on aging, and could I also suggest perhaps a copy to the friends of the senior center as well?
Certainly.
Okay, and with a copy to the friends of the senior center, maybe Rose Degrees or one of them?
Golden Agers.
Huh?
Golden Agers.
Golden Agers, yeah, no, the friends of the senior center. Uh, under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Let's not get into any ageism here.
Or the group.
That's our official name.
Isn't this, meet the description of what was the Andy's Wagon?
Andy's Wagon, a table inside?
Yeah.
I thought that was the bus that went around, helped people.
No, it had everything.
Yeah.
Well, whatever.
All right.
Mr. President?
Counsel Valentin.
Thank you. Um, first of all, does the maker of the order want to say anything before I speak? I'll take that as a no. Okay. So, um, the, uh, the director of the senior center actually happens to be my constituent because she lives in Ward 4, and, um, she reached out to me through email because she couldn't contact Counsel Graney through email, um, before this meeting tonight, so that she could, uh, offer him an update. So I just wanted to read that into the record per her request.
Sure.
Is that a communication?
No, it's an update on what he's asking.
Just curious.
Could you please repeat that?
She's saying that because you don't have email, because you're one of them seniors without email.
Stay strong, Howie.
Stay strong, Howie, yeah. Uh, she's saying that she couldn't.
I'll be nice.
She couldn't get ahold of you by email, so she reached out to Counsel Valentin to deliver a message.
Because I'm, because I'm her ward counselor.
Because she's your ward counselor.
The director of the senior center sees me just about every day, so she could have contacted me personally.
Oh, okay. All right, go ahead, Counsel Valentin has the floor.
I, I have a constituent request, and I'm following that, thank you. So very briefly, the email from the director of the senior center says that, first of all, that the cafe is a very popular space at the senior center, that it's often full, and that to accommodate this, um, she has actually already ordered additional tables and chairs to try to address the issue. They are due to be delivered at the center by mid-May. She also said that she does not mind setting aside a table for wheelchair patrons in any way, but that she is hoping that the additional seating will provide a solution to the bigger problem of not enough seating generally. Many of our patrons have mobility issues. So she just wants to be very clear that, um, that she has no problem, um, following what is best for the folks that are at the senior center every day, and obviously it's a great problem that we have a overcrowding issue, right? It means that services are being used continuously, so, um, they're, uh, they are expecting this delivery of additional tables and chairs mid-May, and hoping that that will also assist with the concern that's been presented. Thank you.
And we'll be waiting with bated breath.
Yes, while playing bingo weekly on Friday afternoons, because bingo is back weekly. So that has, uh, that battle has been handled and won. All right, so, uh, motion on the floor, thank you, Council Valentin, for that update. Very helpful, and is, the motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to the Senior Center Director, the Board, and Friends of the Council on Aging. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number fifty comes to us by way of Councilors Jordan, Bartley, Roman. Is that the mayor appoint a resident of Ward One or Two to the Fire Commission as soon as possible. Besides the fire truck for downtown being browned out, it appears the commission seats have been browned out, too, for the residents of the lower wards. The mayor recently appointed a resident of Ward Seven, no, no slight to Ward Seven, but to the vacancy formerly held by Ms. Devine. The mayor should reconsider the appointment. Appoint a resident who can be a voice for residents of Wards One and Two. Right now, only Five, Six, and Seven have residents represented on the commission. So I'm, I'm certainly recommending either we're gonna have, go, go to committee for a discussion, or just adopt it and send it over and ask for, um, you know, some consideration. You know, again, it's coming back to the issue about what is the representation of Wards One and Two, and I think despite all the conversations that have been going on, it would have been helpful, while there was an open seat, not to remove somebody, but while there was an open seat, to, to consider putting someone from those neighborhoods in, in, in the board, um, especially with all the issues and concerns, and people feeling like they're not being represented, so, uh, Council Roman?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, and I thank you for filing this initial order, and I completely agree, and this goes hand in hand with my other order. I look forward to getting the city clerk's list of where all of our commissioners live. Um, and this goes, again, to the larger conversation for all of those individuals that are in this room, um, and in the public concerned about the representation from the lower wards. For me, no bigger need is there than a three-member commission to ensure that the lower wards are represented. So I think that this was a brilliant order. I think it goes hand in hand, and I never co-sign or sign onto an order without something up to follow up, because now, uh, based off of that amazing conversation we had about representation and making sure that it's from all over the city of Hoyoke, I'm not only gonna be charging on this commission, I look forward to that list, and any commission that doesn't have a representative from Ward One or Two, I will be filing a similar order to ensure that there is representation from these lower wards, or any of the wards that are missing, I think, and I agree with that proportional representation. I think that if there's a lack of a commissioner, let's say, from Ward Five, or Three, or Six, or Seven, I think that every commission should have a good representation or a nice mix, or someone, uh, as we rotate them out as there's a vacancy, and I agree, no bigger conversation, and I do know some residents in Ward Two who saw this order, Mr. President, who will gladly be interested in signing up, and I know there's some in Ward One. I think it's a great time to have those individuals there and present. Thank you.
Yep, Council Bartley?
Can you update us on the Ward Seven?
Yeah, it's my understanding, as you know, uh, Fire Commission appointments don't come before the council for concert, uh, confirmation. It's my understanding that our former treasurer, Mr. Lumbrue, was appointed to this seat, so I don't know if that was a citywide search, or there was a posting up, but, you know, I mean, I think we gotta look a little deeper in the bench than, you know, former treasurers, uh, who didn't even actually leave under the greatest of circumstances, by the way. We'll just put that aside for a moment, but, you know, i- it's like, here is a classic example of, you could have reached out to somebody from Wards One or Two, and you picked another city hall insider to go onto the Fire Commission. And really, we gotta come up with a deeper bench of representation on these commissions of regular folks, um, besides, you know, who's showing up at the, at the parties. And we just gotta do a better job than, you know, some of these has-beens. And, uh, you know, I just think we, we, we owe it, we owe it to, uh, we owe it to, uh, the people of Ward One and Two to be considered, especially in this circumstances, under, under these conditions, so, there you have it. Uh, Council McGee?
I, it's Ward Seven, I'm gonna stick up for my Ward Seven people, so...
Fair enough, yeah.
I understand your points and all the points made, but, um, uh, he's a Ward's representative, and, um, uh, you know, I grew up with John. Uh, I know that issues back and forth as we all discuss them, but, uh, to me, um, I understand your arguments, but for me, I'm not gonna take that road. Um, if he's willing to serve, then that, you know, we, we take who we can get in order to help our, our department, so, for me, I get your points, I get everyone's points, and I'm gonna stick up for my Ward, uh, my Ward people, as well as any, anyone in the city.
The really, the, yeah, no, you're a hundred percent right, and, and you're right to take that position. My only point is, it's not a slight to Ward Seven, and even to a lesser extent, it's not a slight to the former treasurer, although I'm not a big fan of his, um, once was, not anymore. Um, but, the point is that, the issue is, we gotta spread it around. I mean, here's a perfect opportunity. Ms. Devine left, leaves the Fire Commission, and there's no, I mean, where's this, what is the search process? Right? It's like, how do you even apply to no, and it's just another buddy of the mayor who happens to live in Ward Seven? It's not really a Ward Seven issue. It's just another buddy of the mayor gets put into one of these positions, there's no real search, and yet, we've been hearing for months, if not the last year plus, you know, what's going on with the brownout situation? There's like no sensitivity, just seems like it's a deaf ear to the low, to the downtown, that there's no opportunity in any of these lower wards to get people on these commissions. And when you look at the proportion, I think we'll see from these reports, it's my understanding there is a disproportionate share of people that are not from Wards One and Two, that are on some of these commissions. That's my only point, is how much are we even trying, reach out? It's really not, you know, that, that's the greater point. So maybe we send it to committee, um, and we have a conversation, and we wait for this report that's coming out, but it certainly seems to me that, you know, we can be doing better. Council Sullivan?
Just, um, a, a question. Um, is this the only commission that doesn't require city council approval?
DPW, unfortunately, is the other one. Yeah, two, two important ones. The council's passed on about three different occasions a charter change, but the mayors have, have never approved it. We've tried to make them confirmed in the past.
Interesting.
Yeah, I know. They're, they're really important, pretty important commissions, and there's no confirmation authority. These are, these are straight-up political appointments of the mayor, these two commissions.
So, i- if this is a charter change, wouldn't it have to go on the ballot?
No, not for these.
Not for these.
Because it's not, the only time you have to get a vote of the people on charter changes is related to the elected officials, because we're not allowed to change our own terms of office, we're not allowed to change our, um, sort of electoral conditions, if you will, uh, without a vote of the people. But a lot of this type of mechanical stuff, uh, we can just change that with approval of us, the mayor, and the legislature, and the governor.
And would, i- is this a situation where we can't even override the mayor's veto, though?
No, charter changes, the mayor has an absolute veto. He can, if he doesn't sign it, it doesn't go to Boston. So, like, these, these votes have historically been like twelve to two, I mean, pretty overwhelming votes, I think was the last one, but, I mean, we could try it again, um, but I know I have mentioned this to Mayor Morse before, and he's not a fan of changing it, you know? His view is, if you change that, what are you giving me? You know, so it's, I don't know what he wants, but, Council Roman?
I just want to make it clear that these are political appointments, that's the process. So again, when people come in this room and say there are no such thing as political appointments, this is exhibit A in my opinion, in my humble, new council opinion, and I respect that, and I completely agree with Council McGee. This is no slight to whoever it was, because, you know, until recently, I knew that that was the appointment, but I never got a call out, I never got an email, there was never a post, there was never a newspaper press release, as we've seen in the past for other committees or commissions, to say there is an opening, and is there any other constituents or citizens that are interested in serving? So that's why I sign on to this co-file, quote, to this order, it's not specific to an individual, but in the larger sense of we have to have that conversation, and I think that, again, we need to spread the love. Thank you.
Good. All right, very good. Um, motion to send to, maybe, yeah, Council Brezneren, you have a thought on this?
Is there, is there a way, I mean, you know, my concern is that, you know, why, why wouldn't you have someone that either has public safety experience, i.e. an ex-fire chief, an ex-fire commissioner, an ex, someone that has some sort of background in public safety, so, I mean, could we, could we draft something that isn't a charter change that says, this is what the commission should be made up of? It should be made up of a for, former fire firefighter, um, you know, uh, job, and two-
Like an ordinance with the qualifications.
An ordinance with the qual, I mean, we have no qualifications, so again, and this is no, no criticism, I respect the current commissioners and the, and the one that's going on there, but it's like, do they, do, do they know the difference between a truck and an engine? Or, or is it just they, you know, they both, I mean, someone that has some experience that really is involved with the fire department, that has it in their heart to, to, to fight for it?
Right.
As opposed to political appointments that say, oh, you, you want, you wanna cut ten firefighters? Okay.
So maybe why don't we send it this to Public Safety Committee, maybe, and we can have a discussion?
Second.
We'll see. We'll see what headway we can make. Uh, all in favor of sending fifty to Public Safety?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number fifty-one, introduced by Council Jordan. That the canal walk between Dwight and Appleton Street be named Elaine Pluta Place in honor of our former mayor and former council colleague.
Mr. President?
Sure, yeah. Yep, absolutely, okay, so...
Unanimous.
How about everybody wanna be signed on? Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
All right. Sign them on anyways, even though if he's not here. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, I'm glad you're all gonna join us. She's a really nice lady. So, I would make a motion, or somebody would be kind enough to make a motion to adopt this.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
So motion's been made and seconded to adopt, under discussion. Uh, first thing I want to just say is, you know, when people come into these offices and really like have certain signature things that they really did, and you have an opportunity to recognize somebody like this former mayor, and somebody who did years and years and years on the city council, who really like, this person really did something significant, I think it's really an opportunity here where you could do sort of an honorary naming of that section of the Canal Walk for her. Um, I know Elaine, this would mean the world to her, and the, the world to her family, and she really put a lot of work in this, I think she's really instrumental, has been talking about Canal Walk way before that thing really became vogue, and I think everybody in here knows that, and, and certainly around town, this is like her big thing, really promoting this Canal Walk, so I think this would be really meaningful, and it would be a nice way to recognize Elaine.
I think it's a great way to honor her.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I, I just have a question?
Of course, yeah.
Is, is there, is there a specific reason for that, uh, length of it? Like, I mean, you know...
Because I think that was sort of like the main one, if, if memory serves me, that's the one.
The first phase.
Exactly, and, and it's the one, like, sort of across from Heritage State Park, and...
I was, I mean, I was just wondering if it should be a, a bigger portion, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, um...
I, I just was wondering what the reasoning was behind it.
Yeah, um, because, uh...
Phase one, whatever phase one covers.
Yeah, and-
Which I don't know off the top of my head.
Right. Was basically, that would be like the main signature piece, and, uh, I suppose we could make it bigger, but certainly at a minimum, you know, a couple of the nice ceremony, we could have a nice ceremony, and, uh, the, the signs there, I think, she would be tickled pink just with that.